Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, February 2nd, 2016, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All selectmen are present with the exception of Selectman Kalenda. I understand that a number of people are here for a discussion relative to the sighting of the medical marijuana dispensary, but before we get to that, we have a license hearing, which is scheduled at 6:30, which it is now almost 6:45. We need to proceed with that first. In terms of the progress of the meeting, after that hearing, we're going to jump very quickly to the preservation restriction for 84 Main Street Garfield Estate. We have counsel here to get that off the agenda, and then we'll dive right into the medical marijuana issue. So, in terms of planning, to the extent that anyone is here, I would say we should reach that around 7 o'clock, so 15 minutes or so, pretty much on schedule. So, with that, Mr. Purple, 6:30 PM, Class II License Hearing.
Yes, Mr. Rooney, you have before you an application for a Class II License Hearing by Right Way Auto Sales Incorporated, 355 Turnpike Road. Just as some background, this is an existing location for a Class II hearing. Presently, Simon's Auto Body Incorporated. Simon Defradis Jr. is the owner. He holds the Class II License at that location. He's selling the used car business to Right Way Auto Sales. And there are two conditions on the existing license. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Saturday, 8:00 to 2:00 PM, and Sunday it is closed. And there are no more than 14 used cars should be stored on the said property at any one time. Those are the two conditions on the current license. These conditions have been on previous Class II licenses at that location for the better part of 30 years. Mr. Defradis, Simon's Auto Body is still going to be running the auto body business on the premises. And Vinicius Souza of Right Way Auto Sales is going to be the new owner of the used car business. And the one change the board needs to be aware of is, I believe, that Mr. Souza is going to be asking the board to amend the closed-on-Sunday condition, allow the sale of cars on Sunday, but I believe the applicant can then can speak for himself on that issue. But that is the background. There will be, I don't believe there's any changes with the existing lot in terms of the number of cars, the number of spaces. Everything's going to stay the way it is. It's a change of the license with the additional issue of whether or not the board would allow the sale of cars on Sunday, which is currently prohibited under their current license.
Okay, is Mr. Souza or someone on his behalf here?
Yes.
Come on up to the front table here, sir. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Call me Vinny, too.
I'll call you Mr. Souza. Thank you very much, sir. First of all, thank you for attending. Thank you for your business in Southborough. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what your intentions are relative to this location, sir.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Started in the car business a long time ago, about seven years. Worked very hard to make my way up, and eventually decided to start my own business. You know, a lot of hours. I wanted to create a work-life balance for myself. So, I am currently licensed in the town, in the city of Worcester for the resale of automobiles. And just for the purpose of seeking a larger location, a better, you know, better place, because we were on Route 20, so Route 9 is more visibility, we decided to move to Southborough. So, that's the reason why we're asking for a license.
And in terms of the number of employees and who's going to manage the operation?
Just my father and myself, for the time being.
And where do you, where your father lived? Do you live locally or do you live?
I live in Hudson, and my father lives in Marlboro.
Okay. And you're also seeking to extend the hours of operation to include Sunday, correct, sir?
Yeah, you know, the car business, weekends is usually the more profitable timeframe for the sale of vehicles, so makes sense for me to try to have it open on Sundays.
Mr. Shea?
There are other Class II facilities in town that are allowed to sell vehicles on Sundays? Is that correct?
I would have to check that. I'm not, I'm not sure what the other Class II.
I'm not sure what the other Class II licenses, whether or not they have that restriction or not.
Mrs. Faniff?
Number of employees?
Just my father and myself, for the time being.
Mr. Semino?
Why 6:00 o'clock in the evening on Sunday?
I don't need, I don't need until 6:00 on Sunday. That might be incorrect. The hours for Sunday would be from noon time till 4:00.
Noon to 4:00, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Semino?
How long have you had your license in Worcester?
For a year now.
And did I understand, you said you're looking for a better, you know, a larger location, more visibility, so I infer that you are giving up your
Yes.
...business in Worcester in favor of this one?
That's correct.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
I have no questions, sir. I've reviewed the material. Mr. Semino?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to approve the Class II License for Right Way Auto Sales, Inc., 355 Turnpike Road, with the modification of doing business hours on Sunday from noon until 4:00.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
So, what I mentioned, we are going to skip quickly to the preservation restriction, which appears under other matters properly before the board. And this discussion promises to be brief. It requires a bit of framing of the issue. As some of you here may know, but more in the public generally know, that for a number of months, perhaps spanning into a year, the town has been in negotiations with the current owner of 84 Main Street, known as the Garfield House, the Burnett Estate, and probably some other names, to enter into an agreement whereby the town secures a preservation restriction, which would prohibit the subdivision of that land in perpetuity, in other words, forever, and also maintain the existing structures, plural, on that property. There's the thought process on this board that we believe the vote should get to town meeting with respect to the value of that preservation restriction, and therefore, we have, for the last number of months, through Selectmen Semino and counsel, Town Council Attorney Cipriano, have worked almost daily in working with the owner and the owner's counsel in drafting the preservation restriction. And what we have now, finally, before us, is a draft preservation restriction, which is subject to review and approval by Mass Historical, and subject to an appraisal. And so, it's this board's intention tonight to vote in favor of moving this preservation restriction forward to the next step in the process, and that would be to send it to Mass Historical, to retain an appraiser, to appraise the value of the preservation restriction, and then through Historical Commission, submit an application through the CPC for the funding of this restriction. The draft will be made available this evening. You will see some points in this draft. In particular, right now, we have a placeholder on the value of that restriction. That placeholder lists the value as $1 million, and before anyone gets all excited about that, we needed to put a number in there until we get up, until we get the appraisal. Once we get the appraisal, then that appraised number would then be substituted for the existing number in that document. In addition, for those who have been following this, there's been some changes to the prior version of the preservation restriction. You will recall, some of the conversations early on discussed the owner's requirement, responsibility, obligation to do internal renovations to the property. That is no longer part of this preservation restriction. This preservation restriction secures to the town the development rights to the property, and also secures the external, or maintain the external buildings on the property. So, there's no internal renovation requirement or component being obligated to the present owner. In addition, there was a public access component to the initial preservation restriction, wherein we've discussed with the owner, the ability, from time to time, perhaps on an annual basis, perhaps more frequently, town students or residents be able to tour the property for historic purposes, for any purpose in particular, but only in confined times. The owner has come to the point where he is not willing to allow that public access, so that's a change in this document as well. That said, the owner has worked, as I mentioned, diligently with the town to come up with this document. These things do not just materialize overnight. This board is excited to be able to hopefully present this, not hopefully, but be able to present this at the next town meeting for the vote of the residents in town in terms of their position on the viability or lack thereof. That pretty much is the summary of where we have been, where we are, and where we hope to be. Did I leave out anything that anyone wants to add?
I don't think so.
Okay. To the extent there's any public questions, inquiries, we, I know that the majority, if not all of you, are not here to discuss that, so I will just make that offer, to the extent you want to discuss that. Not seeing any anxious inquiries. Mr. Semino, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board accept the draft preservation restriction agreement between the town of Southborough by and through the Southborough Historic Commission and 84 Main Street, Southborough LLC. The draft would be subject to review by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, review and approval, and, as you've mentioned, will also be subject to a commissioned appraisal by the town to determine the value of the substance of the restriction. And on that basis, I move that we approve and support this draft.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? I just would like to, and I would be remiss if I did not reach out and thank Attorney Pizzoni, who was here this evening, who has represented the owner of the property, in terms of his willingness to engage in extended dialogue with the town and with Town Council, who has occupied many, many hours getting to this point. And with that further discussion, all in favor?
Actually, could I just, one of the quick point. Could I also add to that, that we direct the CPC to move forward with the appraisal concurrent with Mass Historical's review?
Yes.
Document?
So amended. Motion so amended.
Is there a second to that amended motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. So, my prediction of 7 o'clock was five minutes off, which is not bad, considering...
We in Iowa? Is this Iowa?
I'm sorry?
Never mind.
The next item on the agenda, once I find my agenda, Comcan, Inc., Ray, sighting of medical marijuana dispensary. Will the, come on up to the table here, sir. Introduce yourself.
I'm the board. Thank you. So, I do have a PowerPoint.
Okay.
I can either use my laptop or have it on a flash drive. The numbers, the...
I think the laptop's probably better.
Okay. Right away. Good thing we have five minutes here.
So, why don't we take a brief recess while you set up? While you set up, we'll just take a brief recess while you set up.
Thank you.
We're back in session. Just to frame this discussion, for those of you that don't know, let me give you a little bit of the background and how we got to this point. When the applicant reached out to the town initially, he reached, they reached out to Mr. Purple. I had a conversation with Mr. Purple, and I asked him to meet with the applicant along with a Selectman, Selectman Semino, and the police chief, and the building inspector to begin our due diligence. That meeting took place a couple of weeks ago, number of weeks ago? About a month ago? Thereafter, there was a second meeting with the applicant, and the police chief, and the building inspector, and Mr. Purple, and I thought it was advisable at that time to have a different Selectman engage in due diligence. And I asked Mrs. Faniff to do that. So, that brings us to where we are this evening. With that said, sir, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. The microphone in front of you does not amplify.
Okay.
It's being recorded on, for television viewing. I don't think this is your 15 minutes of fame, but if it is, welcome. Identify yourself and tell us who you are and why you're here.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Members of the board, and everybody from the town, I appreciate you coming, truly. My name's Valerio Romano. I'm an attorney in California and Massachusetts. I've been living here for about five or six years. I represent Comcan, Inc., which is the applicant to cite a registered marijuana dispensary in the town. I also represent a few dozen other applications in the current application process. In my office, represented about two-thirds of the successful applications that currently exist in the Commonwealth from the 2013 and 14 application process. I am frequently in front of different towns, trying to work with them on implementing the medical use of marijuana program in a responsible and thoughtful manner. I've been doing this in one way or another for almost 20 years, and Massachusetts implemented a fantastic law, highly regulated, very thorough, very thoughtful, pretty much the opposite of the regime that we were practicing under in California. And as part of that, strong, thoughtful groups like Comcan, I'm here with Mark Rosenfeld and Ellen Rosenfeld, founders of Comcan, come and participate in this. Sort of famously Congressman Bill Delahunt participated in this, and many others. And it's really the opposite of California in that it brings successful people to the fore. We have, in our office, we run thorough background checks on anybody that comes in to our office. We make sure that they are vetted. We use the same background check company that the Department of Public Health does. We also make sure that they have the financial viability to actually open one of these. There's nothing worse than spending a year or two on trying to develop a project, and then just having it stall because it can't get paid for. So, Comcan is a self-funded, fantastic group of people that really have a deep, passionate, compelling story as to why they're in this. They don't have a management company set up to extract money from this. They're actually doing this to help patients, and they are, would be a great, fantastic corporate citizen in addition to Southborough. We have a board of directors, and, you know, I'm going to let Mark quickly introduce his team. This is on page one of the handout that I supplied. What I'm projecting is virtually identical to what you have in front of you. Mark, do you want to talk quickly about your board?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and public at large here. My name is Mark Rosenfeld. I'm the CEO of Comcan. I live in Holliston, Massachusetts, a little bit down the road from here, with my wife and three children. I'm here with my sister Ellen, who fills the role of board president. I'm an attorney. Ellen's an attorney. There's attorneys scattered throughout our board. There's MBAs, there's MDs, there's PhDs. We've done a, I think, a very thorough job of providing this group with a, as good a team as you'll see anywhere associated. And the reason everybody has come together with this, as Valerio sort of alluded to, is Ellen and I lost a mother and a... And, and the reason everybody has come together with this, as Valerio sort of alluded to, is Ellen and I lost a mother and a brother, and that's to cancer, that's a theme that runs through our group. There's, everybody's lost someone. There's two breast cancer survivors on our team, there's a prostate cancer survivor, there's a parent of a child who's currently in treatment. We have brief bios, have a short sort of bio on everybody that I put a stack of. I don't know if I anticipated quite the robust turnout, but there's a sufficient stack out there. Also, this is available and the documentation that we provided to the board has full resumes on everyone. I'll touch briefly on the medical component, because this is a medical marijuana program. We have, on our board of directors, we have Dr. Donna Berry, who's a PhD nurse scientist. She's a director of the Cantor Center at Dana Farber. She's an associate professor of medicine at Harvard Medical School. There's Dr. Joel Frost, who's a EDD, former instructor, a psychologist, former instructor at Harvard Medical School, former staff member of Beth Israel. There's my chief medical officer on the executive management team, you know, sort of day-to-day stuff. Dr. Puli Kohn went to Brown for medical school. She's done everything from, you know, she was a New England life flight trauma doctor to an extensive private practice in treating chronic pain through natural, natural means. So, in terms of who we are, like Valerio said, we're primarily family-based. We grew up not far from here in Milis, that's where our corporate office is. We want to stay close to where we come from. We have no outside investors, we have no outside management. That's, that's pretty much what you got with us.
So, in addition to the executive management team that Mark touched on, we also have Jamie Syke, who comes from, he's a cultivator. And you can't really have legitimate, large-scale cultivation experience to really provide quality, consistent medication in the Commonwealth, just because it's a relatively new program here. In California, it has been going on for 20 years. And Jamie's experience comes from that. He had 30,000 square foot cultivation facilities that he managed with 50-plus employees there. So, he has the know-how to do it. And then I've been lucky enough to be invited to be a part of Comcan's team in helping them with compliance. And one way or another, you know, doing this state, municipal, and even federal level, to the extent possible, for quite a number of years. And so, I'm pleased to be part of Comcan and working with this group. So, this, this chart here, just sort of briefly, you know, checks off the areas that we have experience. I won't belabor this, but it is there. And if you look at it, the, the main areas of experience that you want are some medical use of marijuana, history, medical, business. These do operate as Chapter 180 nonprofits in the Commonwealth. They are not public charities, though, but they are nonprofits. So, we have business experience, compliance experience, legal experience, and security experience. So, the RMD application process, this is the second round of applications. It was originally under the Patrick administration and sort of, there was a lot of press and that application process took a lot of heat. People might recall that the voters passed a five-page law in 2012. The Public Health Council and the Department of Public Health implemented about 50-plus pages of regulations. The regulations for the program did not change, but when Governor Baker took office, he did implement a new application round and amended the application process significantly to make it more streamlined and less sort of cage-match competitive of everybody in the Commonwealth, but really regulatory. You have to comply with the regulations, less arbitrary, and they've put together quite a strong application process. Comcan has put together fantastic application work and they're one of the handful of groups in the Commonwealth that's been invited for the citing profile, which is the third phase of the application round. They submitted an application of intent, which showed that they have the requisite funds required, which is actually, in this case, $1.3 million. They've submitted a management and operations profile, the Department of Public Health. After we did, also did a thorough vetting of everybody on their team, did all the background checks. As part of the management and operations profile, they gave summaries of all their operating plans to the Department of Public Health. And now they've made it through that and they've been invited to submit the citing profile. And that's when we tell the department where we plan on citing, simple as that. So, you know, the, the main concern, and I've found doing this, the main concern is security that people typically have. And so, the Department of Public Health has robust, strong security regulations that are absolutely thorough. We welcome the opportunity to work with the Chief of Police and other town departments here in Southborough as much or as little as the town to work with us. But the subsection 110, 105 CMR 725 dot 110, has the security regulations for the medical use of marijuana program, and they are, they are thorough. They have limited access areas, only qualified patients and their caregivers and dispensary agents, which are also background-checked thoroughly or allowed in the facility. The, I'll get, I'll get to more of them, you have to have an ID badge while you're in. At this facility, there will not be any cultivation or processing of cannabis, period. There's no kitchen, no, no cultivation, nothing. It's merely a dispensary for 1% to 2% of the population that would actually benefit from this. There'll be no signage that somebody driving by would know that it's a marijuana dispensary. The only way you'd know is because it's going to be kept in a pristine manner. The facade, the grounds will be well-manicured and kept perfectly. That's the only way you know that anything new is happening there. Although the building is quite nice as it is, Comcan will continue to upkeep it and make it even better. And that will be part of site plan approval and special permit here in the town as well.
Can I interrupt for one question? Just so I don't forget it later, in terms of the dispensing process, can you take us step-by-step?
Sure, so I actually have it.
Through the step, yeah, and I, and I don't mean to interrupt your presentation and, but I'm going to, because I'd like to know what the dispensing process is.
Please do.
Yeah.
I'm an attorney, I make this joke a lot, but I like to hear myself talk, so you ask me any questions.
Yeah, well, we're not going to like that too much, so we'll, we'll try to shorten it up a little bit.
I'll keep moving. So, I have a slide for that, sort of, I call it the patient and caregiver experience. It's a few pages in on your handout that I gave you. So, what happens is a patient will come to Comcan. And before they can even come inside, this is actually outside, this is a requirement from the Department of Public Health, they have to show their identification. And then they, the Department of Public Health looks at their identification either through, through glass or through a camera. And they'll come into what they call, like, it's like a Sally Porter, an airlock, man trap. They'll come into that, and that's a separate security room with a security guard that will check actually both forms of their identification. They'll have to have a state-issued identification, like a driver's license, as well as a medical use of marijuana program identification card that's issued by the Department of Public Health. And so, when they show both of those forms of identification, the person who's, the security guard will look at the, will check the database. And it has to be live, online, connected to the database at that time. And they'll check the database to make sure their identification is valid, that they're a current member, their current patient. If that all checks out.
The, the state ID that they show has to be the state ID that they used to register that medical marijuana program.
How does one get a state ID?
So, you go to a, you go to a doctor and you, the Department of Public Health and the Public Health Council has required that you have a bona fide doctor-patient relationship.
So, you go to your primary care health doctor?
Ideally, yes.
Okay, you go to him and he or she writes you a prescription to get a card, or how do you get the card?
So, they write you a certification. It's not always your primary care, but ideally it will be, because you have an ongoing bona fide doctor-patient relationship. They'll write you what they call a certification. It's not a prescription, that's some Ninth Circuit law, so not to belabor that. But they write you a certification, it's a First Amendment protection. With that certification, then you have to go, the doctor has to sign you up with the Department of Public Health's online database. They give you an access number. Then that patient will go into the online database, put in that number, and they'll sign up. And then the Department of Public Health will make sure that the certification is valid and it's for, you know, a debilitating condition. And if it all checks out, they'll send you an actual plastic program ID card, similar to a driver's license. It has a barcode on the back, it's, it's a program ID card by the state.
And are you aware of any instances of counterfeit cards or any sort of shortcuts to that process? Have you been in your experience at all?
I'm not, absolutely not, Mr. Chairman. In fact, you know, I've been, I've seen patients go through the process, I've seen them log on, I've watched them go through it. The department's diligent, they don't send you the card the next day, they check it out and they make sure that you have a legitimate doctor.
So, after you get this card and you go through this airlock, what's the next step?
So, you show the card and your state-issued ID, your driver's license to the security. If they, then they'll have to go onto the database. And if they're, if your internet's down, if Comcan's internet's down, they can't let anybody in, they can't do any sales.
When you say "they," you're talking about your employees?
Comcan are the employees, yeah. So, they have to be connected real-time, online to the database, to check the, check the person out, check, make sure they haven't purchased their limit. If, if all checks out there, then they're allowed in the second door, now they're actually in the dispensary.
When you say "check to make sure they have not exceeded their limit," is there a rolling accounting kept somewhere relative to the amount that a particular patient is able to secure?
Absolutely. So, the Department of Public Health's online database keeps track, the doctors can specify certain amounts. If not, it defaults to a greater amount. The Department of Public Health keeps track of that. A patient cannot go to one dispensary in one town and then go to another one, another town, and continue to purchase. That's why you have to actually be connected live to that database, because it will check and see how much you've purchased in the 60-day period. And if you aren't connected live, you can't do any sales.
So, unlike a patient who may be getting some C2 drugs at one pharmacy, now they can go to another pharmacy and get C2 drugs, and there's no corresponding accounting of that?
That's absolutely right.
All right, keep going. So, you get in, you get your, you have your card, you get through the airlock, you then confirm that the patient has not exceeded his or her monthly or 60-day allotment, what's next after that?
So, at that point, when they come in, they'll be, they call them dispensary agents, but it will essentially be somebody who's working in the front of the house.
Is it a pharmacist?
Well, they have, Comcan has significant medical experience on their, on their executive management team and directors. They have not hired that actual agent yet. I think ideally it would be somebody who has that kind of experience, but they will certainly be trained, because at that point, Mr. Chairman, the patient or their caregiver, or the patient's caregiver, if the patient's unable to get there themselves, is actually offered the opportunity for a consultation with somebody who knows about what strains are good. For, different strains help different conditions. Some people with MS, medical use of marijuana is incredible what it does for MS patients.
Is it your company that works with the particular patient relative to the strain? Or is that something from the doctor that's sent to you with regards to the strain? In other words, what, where's the discretion as to what you dispense?
So, absolutely, we would love it if doc, if more and more doctors would educate themselves about what strains and tell patients exactly what to get, and then it would take that out of our hands. Unfortunately, it's just not there yet, and many doctors don't engage in that. So, with that in mind, we would engage in it with the patient. And, you know, but there are, there are studies as to what strains help, what, you know, and there's a high CBD strain, for instance, that has no psychoactive properties, sort of famously Sanjay Gupta's come around, there's some, you know.
Okay, let's not get off track. So, you, you then verify all that information, you determine what type of strain, or if I'm using the wrong term, you correct me, what strain or what potency or whatever you call it, then you fill a, is it a prescription, what is it?
Well, so, right when they come in, you offer them a patient consultation or to browse educational material. So, they'll have that opportunity, they take it or they don't. Then they'll be able to go to, you know, essentially, you know, a checkout counter. And the counter operates exactly like a jewelry store. The Department of Public Health has made clear that if they want to see, you know, one form of cannabis, one, whatever they want to look at, the, the person working there can take one out, show it to them.
Take one, meaning one what?
One package of cannabis out, show it to the patient, a gram, whatever it is. And then the patient says, okay, well, let me see, what's that there? Then they'll have to take that, put it back in before they can take the next one out.
Okay.
So, then the patient will eventually purchase the cannabis. And at that time, when they purchase the cannabis, the, they will do another check with the online database to make sure that, you know, everything is still in order, one more time, just because that's the way the department wants it and that's the way to make sure that no one else is getting it. And then at that point, the patient purchases it and then leaves. There is absolutely no onsite consumption allowed, period. There is no loitering allowed. We're going to have a security guard at the location whenever it's open, and that's going to make sure that no one's loitering outside, no one's hanging out in the parking lot, none of that's going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so also, I was going to get, yes, and so.
So, then they take their, their, their purchase, they take it and presumably they go wherever they're going to go and utilize it?
That's right, that's the idea. They would go, hopefully go back home and, and utilize it.
Okay.
And so, yeah, in addition to that security and having no, no onsite consumption, no loitering, there's security cameras all outside of the, of the facility and all inside. Every, every square foot is covered of the facility. The Department of Public Health, as part of the application process, thoroughly vets your architectural review and security program. Steve Chason, who's the inspections manager, who I've worked with thoroughly, he's a former law enforcement from Essex County, he actually, he actually goes in and looks where all your cameras are, and he will make you change things. I have not done one architectural review where he has not had significant comments and made people update and amend and change things. And this is after I've been through a whole bunch of them, and he still does it. So, he's very, very diligent and thoughtful. And so, within the dispensary, also there's limited access areas. There's a back of the house where patients can never get, right? There'd be no reason to, they only get the front of the house. There's limited.
What's in the back of the house?
That's where you would have a vault, where you would store the cannabis that you're going to be using for that half-day or that day until more comes, more is delivered from the cultivation and processing facility. You would also have a vault for cash. So, there'll be frequent cash sweeps from the registers, so there'd be, somebody comes, and this has not happened, and studies show that this has not happened, but, you know, there's always a risk of security anywhere in any business. There's going to be frequent cash sweeps, cash is not kept in the front, it gets deposited in the vault and gets moved frequently to Century Bank.
Is most of this a cash transaction, in your experience?
It is, unfortunately. There are, there are debit and credit card processors that do do this, but unfortunately, right now, given the fact that it's still a Schedule I controlled substance under federal law, you have to be a little less than transparent with your debit and credit card processing. You can't say cannabis sale, you would say medical sale or pharmaceutical or whatever. And, you know, and for good or worse, and probably for good, Century Bank, which is the main bank that's handling these accounts in the Commonwealth, has said, look, until we can be fully transparent with the feds, we're not doing it. So, they've said, you know, and so the feds actually in February of 2014 put out a banking memo, and they've said what all the obligations for a bank, and they have to do, the bank also does thorough background checks, they have binders on these groups. They also file suspicious activity reports every time a deposit is made. So, they have the full paper trail of what happens. And so, Century Bank has said, look, we can't be forthcoming with the feds, we're not doing it. They're very detail-oriented as far as, as far as that's concerned. So, so cash will frequently go.
Yeah, sorry, I, he's got so much information, he talks so fast, too. I just wanted to complete, in terms of your line of questioning, in terms of the dispensing process, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we will, we will grow, cultivate, process all the cannabis, all the medicine at a facility in Medway. Before it leaves that facility, it is packaged in medical jars for lack, you know, prescription jars, for lack of a term. It's labeled as to what it is, it's barcoded at every amount that we offer for sale, whether it a gram or, you know, an ounce. That is delivered to the dispensing location, that would be delivered to the Southborough location. It goes in to a safe.
Would it be with your own personal regular delivery truck? Or do you use UPS or FedEx or what do you use?
No, FedEx, but Valerio will talk about that in terms of what's required under the regulation. It's very thorough.
Okay.
But what I want to make clear is that there's no, you know, people are here, right? So, they've seen, they've gone online, they've seen videos, they've seen videos of Colorado or California, where you walk into this marijuana utopia of large jars all stacked around, it's not what it is. There's no.
Well, you said there's a jewelry case display, right?
Yes, so that's the small sample of each. When you make your selection from that, it's input into a computer terminal, that feeds a point-of-sale room in a back room. The medicine's taken, the prescribed amount, you know, the chosen amount, I should say, passed through a, a pass-through window to the dispensing agent, who then takes it and hands it off.
So, to summarize, there's certainly extensive, and at least in some people's minds, sufficient controls relative to the cultivation, how it gets from point A to point B, and then ultimately to the patient.
Absolutely, and Valerio will, will speak to this, but there's something in the industry called.
Unless you're going to spend a lot more time on these controls, I, maybe you can move on to the next issue.
We'll move on, of course, Mr. Chairman. Just, every gram is tracked from seed to sale. There's bar, lot, lot and batch numbers on them. And then also, as far as the delivery from the cultivation facility, there has to be two dispensary agents in a van with a secure lockbox bolted or welded into the van. Two dispensary agents, they have to plan their route ahead of time. If they deviate from their route at all, they have to notify the Department of Public Health and law enforcement within 24 hours. They have to have GPS going the whole time, and they have to have a live call to the plate, to the cultivation and processing facility as they're driving.
Does your world get all turned upside down if in November the state voted to legalize marijuana?
Taking all my questions. So, no, Mr. Chairman, actually, it doesn't at all.
Yeah, why not?
So, one, in Colorado, actually, after.
Okay, go ahead.
After the legalization effort in Colorado, the volume of medical marijuana sales actually went up. And that's largely because non-medical or recreational marijuana is taxed at a higher rate. So, so people want to stay medical, they're patients, right? So, it doesn't end the ability to, and that's the same thing here. The ballot initiative that will be on the ballot at the end of this year has a 12.5% tax on top of, you know, that doesn't exist for medical, so that's one reason. So that's one reason. I think there's also some larger acceptance of cannabis as a whole. Additionally, Comcan is doing this, you heard from Mark, you know, that they've had, it's about people with cancer and people who are sick and have.
Yeah, I don't think we need to talk about the efficacy of the treatment. I, I mean, we could spend hours on the science, but I don't, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, yeah, stay with the program. But the point is that they're not doing this to get in a rec, they want to help the patients of the Commonwealth.
Okay.
I apologize for.
No, no need to apologize.
Okay, um, so also the deliveries, and, you know, the, the chief had mentioned that, that something that this is what he thought would be, would be valuable. And, and Mark's, uh, securing that with the landlord, the deliveries will be in a secured garage bay. So it's not somebody's going to park outside and have backpacks filled with cannabis and, and walk in the front door. They're actually going to pull into a secured garage bay. The door is going to close behind them and then the cannabis is going to be brought in. So there's not going, through the back of the house. So there won't even be any opportunity for, you know, somebody to, to rob that, to rob that, um, that van, that delivery vehicle. Okay, just, I'll keep moving here. We went through the patient experience. Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about two fifty-five Turnpike Road? If, if the, if the chairman would like to hear a little bit about the location.
Yeah, I mean, unless someone, and I, I don't mean to dominate the questions, but I thought it might make the process move a little bit more efficiently.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, and I don't want to prohibit any of my board members from throwing out questions at the same time. But, um, why don't you move on to the next area that you were going to cover?
So the next area would be the location and we can talk about this as little or as much.
Well, I think we need to spend some time on that.
I would guess.
Because I assume that as a new business or as a putative new business in town, you want to come to town, you want to be successful. And you want to garner the support of the community.
Absolutely.
And, uh, from all, um, readings of between the lines, um, the question is, is this the best site for you and the community? Or are there alternative sites? And if there are alternative sites, perhaps you become more fully embraced by the community. So in, in addition to talking to two fifty-five Turnpike, tell us a little about, have you done any due diligence within this town as to alternative sites? And is that even on your radar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to let Mark talk about that because he has done that, a, a, an extensive search in town.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, to answer your question, um, when I first began, I research a lot of communities. When I turned my attention to Southborough, the first thing I did was, uh, come to town and obtain, uh, you know, your zoning regulations and, you know, the bylaws and, um, what we call the map, right? Your zoning map.
Mm-hmm.
Southborough, unlike a, a lot of communities, put a lot of thoughtful time and effort and actually created a map that, um, shows not just where you're zoned. So you have a very specific zoning designation for our particular use. It runs, you have to have frontage, as every, I'm sure everyone, uh, certainly on the board knows. You have to have frontage on, on Route nine. And then within that, not anywhere on Route nine, but in specific areas of Route nine, zoned a particular way. On top of that, there are what we call buffer zones, five hundred foot buffer zones around, uh, schools and parks and, uh, places where children commonly, uh, congregate. Those are also, um, sort of pointed out, um, on, on your map. But it's up to us, it's up to the applicant to fully determine that we comply. So to that end, I have traversed your zone many, many times. And you did a, you did a great job. So some towns zone it so tightly as to effectively prohibit anybody from accessing that zone. They zone a piece of swampland or they zone, you know, whatever, something that could never work. And those towns face legal challenges, not just from this industry, but from any use. And again, the, the point of zoning is, zoning is required. If we don't create a zone for a particular use, then that particular use, in theory, can locate in any zone. On paper, your zoning is expansive. In practical terms for my use, it's very, very restrictive. And this is for a couple of reasons. Much of your development along Route nine are, um, large office buildings or large office parks. It doesn't make a lot of sense for my use. It doesn't make sense for my use because I don't take up a lot of space. I can't take two hundred thousand square feet, so they don't have to worry about any other tenants. I'm not worth their time. On top of that, the mixed-use, uh, places while allowed, doesn't fit what we were looking for in terms of, you know, ample parking and not a lot of non-patients coming in and out of the, of the location. I spoke to every property owner that had a sign out, uh, space for lease. I spoke to areas that didn't have signs out, you know? And, what's that? So, I, I mean, I can take you down, I can take you down the road, I don't know if you're looking for that, so.
I just want to know what you've done.
Yes, uh, there are.
I'd like to know what the number two choice was.
There is no number two choice. This was the, this is the only spot in town that was amenable for two reasons. One, for it complied with the zoning. And two, it was a landlord that was accepting of our use. And that's it. Sorry.
Ma'am, before you speak, a couple of things. One,
Sorry, don't.
we'd like to know who you are. And two, if you're going to speak, you need to speak either into that microphone or you can go over there and speak as well.
I just want to say, I just. Oh, Ellen Rosenfeld, I'm sorry, Ellen Rosenfeld.
And Ms. Rosenfeld, who are you?
I'm the president of the Board of Directors.
Okay. Now, please, go ahead.
My, we, we went through this when we met, um, privately a few times. And my brother actually had a video and walked through every single, he contacted every single one that had a sign. And some that didn't have a sign, including, I mean, Mark, you can speak to this, but the Volvo building and the
Yeah.
one next door and the office.
Yeah. So what she's referring to is there are, uh, immediately adjacent, easterly of us is the, obviously the Volvo dealership. There's also two seemingly vacant buildings, um, the corner of Parkerville and then one between that and the Volvo dealership. They appear to have, uh, been part of the deal, as far as I can tell. Uh, when Mr., the Farrell family sold the Volvo dealership, uh, to the new owners. Uh, they're used, uh, while the, the buildings themselves don't appear, uh, to be in use, the parking areas are, um, they take delivery of vehicles there.
So you've explored other options eastbound on Route nine and you believe, at least in your mind, you've exhausted those possibilities as a location for your business. The same, the same with westbound?
Oh, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry, westbound, the same with, yeah, eastbound?
Absolutely. So I've exhaust, I've exhausted every, I, I've left no stone unturned, um, including undeveloped parcels where I talked to, uh, the potential developers. Two fifty-five Turnpike Road works, in, in fact, it's the only spot that works. Now, somewhere down the road, may another property become available, perhaps. But as of this point in time, it was my reasoned and educated opinion that this location is the only location that works for our use and our company.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I appreciate the, the board and, and your, uh, your diligence in keeping it focused. I, I don't want to spin off in the, in the pros and cons of medical marijuana and all that stuff.
We won't let you spin off, keep going.
It's state law and we know that. So, so I think another one of the issues, and this is something that I, I have, I've heard some, you know, some comment or some opposition, is what's in it for the town? Why, why would the town want to allow one of these despite the fact that it's, you know, state law and it's properly zoned and all that? What's in it for the town? So this slide here benefits to Southborough, uh, helps to sort of summarize, uh, what's in it for the town. So the, the first thing is jobs. These are, you know, ten to fifteen full-time jobs, uh, that Comcan will commit both in writing and right now to hiring locally. There's probably, you know, a manager or two that need to have some industry experience that we may not be able to find somebody in Southborough for. But we will commit to hiring, South, uh, Comcan will commit to hiring locally. So there's the jobs and these are real jobs. So you have to, um, Comcan has to pay the Department of Public Health five hundred dollars a year for every, every employee. And if an employee only lasts for two weeks or a month, they got a new employee, they got to pay another five hundred dollars for that employee.
Why?
It's the, it's the, it's the, what you have to pay to the Department of Public Health for having your town. Yeah, for having your employees, it's part of the, the fees. So it's supposed to be a revenue neutral program and so that's why. So, and then you also have to have, pay to have that employee background checked as well. So it's not in their interest to have high turnover. So these are jobs with benefits that they're trying to keep these employees there. So they're good jobs. Um, the next is, is gifts. And the reason I say gifts is because under Mass General Law, the section which authorizes the community host agreement, it's essentially a gift from Comcan to the town. And so there will be in a community host agreement, which will be a cash payment to the town and hopefully used with something that has, uh, you know, a nexus, uh, between, uh, the, any perceived ills and, you know, and, and, um, and ways to combat those ills. I, I believe there, you know, may be a, a public safety, you know, project going on. There's a lot of good uses for this community host payment. And it's a significant amount of money if, and we'd be, I'm sorry. And we can, you know, we'd be, we look forward to working with the town on entering into a community host agreement. I have done them with many cities and towns across the Commonwealth, Quincy, uh, Dennis, Plymouth, um, all over the place. I mean, we've done a bunch of them. And so we're, we're looking forward to working with, yeah, Framingham. You know, we're looking forward to working with the town on, on entering into that. So that's a significant amount of revenue for the town that can be used at, at the town's discretion generally. Another issue is taxes. So we did talk about the fact that Comcan is a nonprofit, but we are not a public charity. So we don't have a five oh one C three designation. So there is no property tax break whatsoever. Now, one might think, well, in a couple of years, Congress might reschedule cannabis and they might be able to get a five oh one C three designation from the IRS and then that would eliminate their tax burden. Comcan will commit right now to continuing to pay property taxes if they purchase the building, no matter what the relationship with the landlord is. However, they're not going to apply for, uh, you know, as long as it's a fair market value tax assessment, they're going to continue to pay it. And they'll commit to that now and in writing in the community host agreement. Another one, and I think this is a particularly strong and important issue for the town. I, my sense is that probably a lot of the people sitting behind me are here in opposition. I hope in some, uh, either maybe we've, we've helped bring around, maybe some, um, have a personal story where they understand the validity, the value of this. But regulation, so right now, in the Commonwealth, the Department of Public Health is not keeping track of home hardship cultivation registrations. Now, when someone says hardship, one automatically thinks financial hardship. But actually, under the regulations for the medical use of marijuana program, there's another hardship and that's lack of access. So Comcan.
Lack of mobility?
Lack of mobility. So I can't get to a dispensary in another town. I can't, don't have anybody who's going to deliver to me. I can, and so with that, they can grow virtually unregulated. Right now, the department's not even keeping track of these grows. And it's almost certain that there's a couple of people in Southborough right now that are growing cannabis in their basement that law enforcement doesn't know about, the department doesn't know about, and that, what the. Legally, legally, because they're medical use of marijuana patient without access. And so Comcan would, will end that. There will not be any more legal home cultivation.
Would you, would that be ended if Comcan set up a dispensary in Framingham?
It may, if Comcan's able to, to, to deliver here.
All right, sorry, go ahead, keep going.
There, as far as Framingham dispensaries, it, there were a hundred and eighty-one applications in the last pro, in the last process. Uh, there were twenty on January thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen that were granted provisional registrations by the Department of Public Health. This is over two years later today, there are four open in the Commonwealth, four. So believing that Framingham is definitely going to be open in a year because they gave out a letter of support, we don't know what's going to happen in one town to another, right? And, and so you have an applicant here with the resources and the team to do it and they'll end that hardship cultivation registration. And so.
What is the closest active operating dispensary right now to Southborough?
So the four that are exists are Northampton, Brockton, Air and Salem.
Okay.
So those are the four existing dispensaries in the Commonwealth right now. Air just opened up recently. And my understanding is that there have been no incidents whatsoever at any of these dispensaries as far as security or diversion, no complaints from law enforcement, anything like that. So, uh, this hard, unregulated hardship cultivation registration, so that regulatory aspect, eliminating these home grows where what people do is they're growing cannabis in their house, they go down and they upgrade their electrical without getting inspected because they don't want anybody to know what they're doing, this is legal. And, you know, and so now we got fires, we got kids walking into closets and basements just taking cannabis. This ends all that, it ends all of it. Another one is control. This is another, what I think is a really important benefit to Southborough as well. The, uh, the Department of Public Health regulates these things i- in an incredible level. They have flash, spot inspections, all kinds of stuff. But Comcan will pledge to work with Southborough Police Department and any town department with, and allow as much oversight as the town, as the town wishes. That, I mean, that's not just a pledge, it's actually a regulatory requirement. Nothing in the regs limits a town's ability to regulate these things themselves. So it gives the town a level of control where if it's one town over, you're still going to have people driving back and forth. You're still going to have people who have cannabis from dispensary, but you have no control over it. You don't have any of these benefits because the other town's getting all the benefits. Another one, and this is, you know, access to safe and reliable medicine from a team that can create quality cannabis. And finally, r- responsibility in the actors. Comcan, and we've been over this, I don't need to belabor this, but Comcan is an incredibly responsible organization with a, with a passionate story as to why they do this. Quickly moving on, uh, just this, just to combat some of the, uh, the, the fears or, or perceived ills of cannabis, the study, I just have three brief studies here. Wayne State University have found that, uh, marijuana patients consistently reported using marijuana to substitute or wean off prescription narcotic drugs. Um, the American Medical Association found that medical cannabis states have almost twenty-five percent lower opiate death, more, opiate abuse mortality rate. Um, twenty-five percent, just about. And then, um, University of Colorado in the Study of Labor, uh, found that, um, that medical marijuana jurisdictions, uh, the research indicated that it's not consistent with the hypothesis that the legalization of medical marijuana caused an increase in the use of marijuana and other substances among, among high school students. So, you know, the, the main fears that people have aren't really well-founded. In fact, they're just not. So here we are to what we're essentially here in front of the town to talk about is a letter of support or non-opposition. Now, uh, the letter of support or non-opposition is a part of the application process, but it is not a regulatory requirement. There is nothing in the medical use of marijuana regulations, one oh five CMR, seven twenty-five, that has anything that ever talks about a letter of support or non-opposition. It is simply not in there. It's part of the application process. And so it's just one step in the application process with the Department of Public Health and really only the first step in a thorough approval process with the town, Southborough. At the Department of Public Health level, although, although Comcan has submitted a, an application of intent, been invited back for a management and operations profile, submitted that, all vetted, been invited back for the sighting profile, they still have to pass the sighting profile and obtain a provisional registration from the Department of Public Health, a provisional registration. Then after they get the provisional registration with the department, they have to go architecture, under architectural and security review. And that's with Steve Chason and the rest of the inspections team at the department. Once they do that, then they have to build out the location and they'll be inspected again with spot inspections all the way along. Um, and all the amendments that the Department of Public Health makes, no matter how smart you have your plans. Um, then they obtain a final registration. And at that point, they get to start cultivating cannabis. And then the Department of Public Health does spot inspections and you have your, you have your policies and procedures. And the Department of Public Health will literally show up at your dispensary, pop open your policies and procedures and say, okay, it says in here that on three thirty on Thursday afternoons, your director of cultivation is supposed to be opening this one safe and depo, are you doing this? Show me the evidence that you're doing this. And they will actually vet and make sure you're following all of your policies and procedures. That's at the Department of Public Health level. And then the, the surprise and scheduled inspections go on indefinitely. At the Southborough level, there is a community host agreement to exercise. There's actually special permit, uh, with the zoning board of appeals. There's also a site plan approval because it's a new use and that's not on there. But given the change of use, there's site plan approval, uh, with this use. Uh, and then, and then the special permit is renewable every two years. And on top of that, there's continued and ongoing interaction with the Southborough municipal departments. For instance, Comcan will be selling foodstuffs, uh, and so that, uh, that will require the board of health to come in. And if, if they so choose, the police department, any municipal department that wants to have, participate in this, they can. And so, uh, it's, I mean, so that's really what the letter of support or non-opposition is about. It's just one step in the Department of Public Health and, uh, Southborough application process. We still have to be thoroughly vetted by the town. Uh, and through the opportunity between special permit, site plan approval, uh, to make sure that our, our plan and we're, we're, um, engaging in this in a thoughtful manner and way that complies with their zoning bylaws is still there. And so, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, that's the end of my presentation. I welcome any other questions that I might be able to answer.
We certainly appreciate your preparation and the materials that you submitted to us and your professional expertise in this area. I'll open it up to members of the board. Fortunately, or unfortunately, I asked most of my questions during your presentation. So why don't we start with Mr. Shea?
Thank you. I seem to read it in the material that you had submitted ahead of time. I didn't see it covered here. Are there home deliveries that are part of your business? And if you could talk about how that works? And are there similar systems that you have in place? Whether the product comes in versus the way it goes out for home deliveries?
Absolutely. So there are home deliveries, and that's what effectively precludes that hardship cultivation registration because of lack of access. So if somebody is, has a significant debilitating medical condition that doesn't allow them to leave the house to go to a dispensary, or there isn't one close enough that's open, or in fact, what's happening now in the Commonwealth is they're all running out of, out of medicine frequently because they just aren't producing enough for the patient need in the Commonwealth. Then there's home deliveries, and that's what Comcan will do. And so it's the exact same process for home deliveries. It's two people in the car, routes planned ahead of time, GPS surveillance, live feed to the point of origin. So yes, there's home deliver, deviate from the route. You've got to inform the Department of Public Health and, and the police department within 24 hours. So yes, there are home deliveries, and yes, they are thoroughly regulated. It's stored inside a lock box that's bolted or welded to the back of the, the van, nondescript vehicle.
And that vehicle is backed into the garage to move the material into the van, and then garage open, as opposed to someone walking out with a bag, backpack, et cetera?
In the event that the delivery, Mr. Shea, were to come from the Southborough location, absolutely, that's what would happen. I think just as likely, the deliveries would come from the cultivation facility, cultivation and processing facility as well. And then there would never even be that issue. Because Southborough, the, the goal is not to store any more cannabis than they would need for the day, right? They don't want to fill up the safes and have, you know, everything they produce just stored at Southborough. They're going to have, they come back and forth every day or, or a few days. So ideally, the whole, the home deliveries would come from the cultivation and processing facility.
And I don't know how much detail you could get into with security, but obviously, you're at the back of your property, abuts residential properties on Clifford Road. And could you talk to what may be planned for security systems to protect your, your area from the residential areas to which you abut?
So Mark and I both might want to talk about this real quick, but the security systems at the, at the location, full-time security guard whenever they're open. Cameras outward facing-
Full-time security guard whenever the facility is open?
Whenever it's open, there'll be a security guard there. Cameras facing outwards, covering the whole facility, the whole parking lot, everywhere else. And then the police department, whether the chief wants it or not, it's, it's up to the chief. But in the event that the chief wants it, they could actually use via, via internet protocol IP, they could scan through our cameras and see what's going on. There'll be panic alarm buttons, although, you know, the, the fact is that these things do not, so far in the Commonwealth, there's been no security incident whatsoever in the four that are open. We don't foresee it happening, but, so that there's that. And then I think Mark can speak a little bit to the relationship between the 255 Turnpike Road and the nearby residents. Mr. Chairman?
If I could just jump in, in terms of the security issues relative to those four sites, what do you know about those? And you mentioned in passing that there's been no security issues. Can you just expound upon that a bit, please?
Well, so, you know, this is anecdotal, but I would defer to your chief of police on this one. And I, and so I don't want to put any words in the chief's mouth.
Sorry, Brian, go ahead.
So relative to the site in relation to, obviously, great in many people are here because of the, the Clifford Road residents and the schools beyond that, the near, near entortier schools. First and foremost, the venue for this particular discussion, although I'm happy to, to broach it now, is its site plan review. At site plan review, all town boards weigh in. They will dictate whether there'll be a fence-
And special permit.
And special permit process. Whether there'll be a, a fence, whether there'll be screening, whether there'll be this, whether there'll be that. I can tell you, the property itself physically abuts one home on Clifford, where all the arrows are going to. There's a 50 foot, so it's a heavily wooded, it's a heavily wooded slope. There is a 15% grade between the two properties. It's about a 50-foot vertical drop between the elevation you see in the driveway and the elevation on our site. It's, with, you know, with all due respect to, to the, to the residents there, it's, is minimal impact as, as there can be. And again, it's site plan review, the residents, all the abutters, not just that homeowner, but all the abutters in that area-
300 foot.
Are invited to the process. They get notice, they're part of, they're part of every conversation. We'll meet with them individually, we'll meet with them as a group, we'll address each and every concern. If there's specific concerns that they have tonight, absolutely prepared to, to speak to them as well.
And the, the building that's there currently?
Yes.
Is it the intent to demolish that and/or to renovate that? And if you, have you had anybody come in just to do a preliminary assessment of the building to see that it would be compatible with the vaults that you need to create with the, you know, secured entrances and all that? Because obviously, the building was built for a much different purpose-
Sure.
From the way it stands now versus what you would be using it for.
Yep, yep. So the, the building will be renovated. I, I've been through the building. In terms of the vaults, it's a retrofit. You have a vault room, you have a secure room within that room, you have a safe. There's plenty of room to do that, there's great patient access space. When you walk in, there's room for conference, you know, a conferency kind of educational area. The building works, the building works for us in terms of, of patient access and patient safety and product safety.
And are there limits on the number of RMDs that you can have? Is that in the regulations previously, is that still in existence?
So, so Comcan, any one applicant can have, can submit up to three applications with the Department of Public Health. They can be supported as our, as ours will by one common cultivation facility.
So, and you, so you currently have Millis, Medway, and Framingham?
So, correct. So Medway's a cultivation facility. And we had to go through this very same process there, even though it's not a dispensing location. We obtained a letter of support from the Board of Selectment. Millis is a dispensing location, and again, the same process as, as we've had here. And then Framingham, we've received a letter of support for dispensing location as well.
So this would be the third dispensing only location? And just one last question.
Yes, please.
I noticed in the backup material with the Framingham agreement that accompanied the letter of support that they sent, that the dates of the letter and of the backup agreement are the same. Kind of implies to me that there was a concurrent negotiation. You know, you know, we'll, assuming we come to agreement on all these conditions, we'll sign the letter. Is that, was that, was that the case? And is that something that you would be amenable to and with Southborough?
I'll say it first, and then you can, you can fill in what I had. So the reason the, Framingham was a, was an odd process, and it was an odd process for one very, very straightforward reason. They have no bylaw. So while in Southborough, this is but the first step in our relationship with the town in terms of regulatory overview. In Framingham, it, this would, was our one and only interaction. So there was no special permit in Framingham, there's no site plan review. Once we obtained the letter, that was it in terms of, aside from Board of Health and building inspector down the road, that was the end of oversight. You do not have that here, you have a thorough bylaw.
So, but some of the conditions that are in that Framingham agreement, so you're saying that those would be brought up and negotiated a part of the permit with, that the zoning board?
Absolutely, so, absolutely. I mean, and we, you know, I would be happy to supply agreements from every town. I've done them and let Southborough pick and choose its, its favorite portions. I don't really see this as a negotiation as much as trying to figure out what Southborough wants.
Have you identified a location in Framingham?
Yes.
Where is that?
331 Worcester Road.
That is just west of the 126 Overpass on Route 9. It's in front of Angry Ham's Garage next to Federal Glass.
And again, as Valerio spoke to earlier, just because we have a, a letter of support from the town of Framingham-
I understand.
Even though we have a potential location, it's not indicative of whether that will be a-
It's a, it's a long way away, particularly Framingham. There's, and you know, I don't want to, I don't want to put words into, into town council's mouth. I, personally, I think there, there's a drawback to a town requiring a guarantee of money before they allow you to, you know, move forward in application process or cite illegally allowed use. And I, you know, and I'll let, you know-
Yeah, we're not going to get into that discussion this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Faniff?
I'll follow up with Mr. Shea's question as far as letter of intent. The letters from Medway, Millis, and Framingham said a dispensary. And you can only have, am I wrong?
No, so the, so the department refers to everything as a dispensary.
Yeah, RMD is sort of the overarching term for cultivation or retail or both.
Do you have three letters in there now?
Yes.
This would be the fourth?
Well, so I need, I'm sorry, so I, I needed a separate letter for cultivation. So every physical location that we control, be it the one cultivation facility that does not have a dispensing element or the three dispensing, you know, pharmacy-type locations-
But separate from the-
Need a separate letter. So I will need to submit four letters to comply, to fulfill my three applications with the state.
Management and operational profile. Will that be prepared before you get to the ZBA? Because it's a public record anyway.
It's already been submitted and approved by the Department of Public Health. They've vetted, they've vetted all of our, our, our management and operation plans as well as our team, and we've been invited back for the third phase, which is the sighting profile. So it's already been submitted and approved.
So as far as the number of client care providers, you've already indicated to them the numbers that you assume will be there?
Actually, the patient, the patient population question is actually on the sighting profile. It's Section E of the sighting profile. So that has not been submitted yet. And it's a really tough question, you know, frankly, because we don't know how many the department is going to license or register over the next couple of years.
The reason I ask that question is, by looking at the site, and I drove up there twice this week, and I asked you when I met with you-
Of course.
Not to cut the trees down behind the buildings. And it's limited parking now, and there'll be two businesses on the site. Is it all by appointment, or is it walk-in?
Yeah, I can, I can see that. So it's, it's not, it's not by appointment, it's walk-in in terms of, the landlord, our landlord happens to be here. He can speak as to employees that are, you know, in, in the other use. In terms of cutting trees, there's no intent to reduce any screening by any stretch of the imagination.
In the back of the building or the side of the building?
Yeah, so Department of Public Health has regulations as to bushes and shrubs and trees up close to the building, so people can't theoretically hide there from sight. But in terms of along the back, we would do nothing but increase screening.
So if you had 10 clients showing up to your business, you would have 10 vehicles, assumingly, in the parking area, which is limited? So how would you control that?
How would I control, so?
The number of individuals that may come any given period of time on a site that's so restricted.
Sure, so, I mean, I, I guess I would, with all due respect, I, I would, I would question the, the, that it's restricted. I believe there's 27 spaces as of now on the site. So I guess in, that could be a question asked of any business, right? What happens if more people show up than there's parking available for?
I know that's going to be a ZBA question, but I, I think it's-
Yeah, well, thank you very much, because absolutely.
Prepare you for, I, I have a problem with it being a dual business to start with, which I stated to you.
Yes.
So, yeah, and, and like you said, the parking, you know, whether we have enough spaces to meet your zoning bylaw for the square footage will all be part of special permit and zoning board appeal, and then, so we will definitely work on that and make sure that we do. And, and one of the nice things, we can potentially park employees off-site in the event that we had that kind of volume, which I, I don't quite expect using 20-plus spaces for patients only. But in case, in the event that we had that kind of volume, we park employees off-site and just shuttle them over, so.
Are we subject to the same appeal process with the Department of Public Health? Residents of the town or the town itself with location?
I'm, I'm not sure if I understood your question, I'm sorry.
A site that may be in your best interest and individuals feel it might not be in their best interest. Are they, are we, do we still have the appeal process to, before the ZBA?
Yeah, well, so nothing changed, the, the abutters and the appeal in front of, with the special permit? Yeah, nothing changes. That's not with the Department of Public Health, though. That's, that's, that's part of your, your local zoning bylaw and then Chapter 48, Section 11, right? So that's, that, that would be what, what that is. And I defer to council as to what the appeals process is.
The process needs to be vetted out here so people understand what the process is.
The zoning process?
Yes, so we're not restricted from doing something similar to a case in 1972 with a medical facility on Boston Road.
Our, our site plan, our special permit process- Our special permit process has been indicated is very comprehensive and detailed and tied to Chapter 48. And that's, would be conducted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the site plan review process, which is also very comprehensive, would be conducted separately by the planning board. And both of those, if, if people aren't satisfied, then abutters would have the right of statutory appeal.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Semino?
So, as, as has been mentioned, there is a substantial process still to go, both at the DPH level and here locally. You have a site plan review, you have a ZBA, public hearing, presumably more than one evening for that, et cetera. What do you anticipate, you know, in terms of actually opening your doors, so to speak, in terms of the timing of that?
So I, I don't think it's far-fetched to say 18 to 24 months before we're finally, we're finally open. We have to, you know, do special permits in our town, finish the Department of Public Health process, do special permits in the various towns, build a cultivation facility from scratch, cultivation and processing. Then they actually have to cultivate the cannabis. Right now, under current state law, you have to grow from seed, which actually takes, adds a few months to the, to the cultivation process as opposed to growing from clippings or cuttings. So that adds, you know, there's five, six months there in the cultivation process alone, and creating your product and opening up. So I don't think 18 months is, you know, is, is putting it off too far at all. And in fact, I wouldn't be surprised if it's further than that. And like I said, you know, there's, there were 20 provisional registrations on January 31st of 2014. There are four open today. You know, so as far as that, it, it takes a long time to actually get one of these done.
So, so I'm back to the, the possibility of a recreational legalization in November. You said, you know, the tax, the tax burden on that is much higher. So, so you're, you, you have the benefit of the lower tax rate. You don't think it will affect your business. Isn't it, isn't it the case, though, that at least the ballot question at this point, I believe, allows, if, if it passes, allows for homegrown, six or up to, you know, six plants per person, 12 plants per household? So nobody's getting taxed on that. And, and I'm, I still don't quite understand, but I'm willing to be educated, why, if I can grow it at home legally after next November, I would ever need to come to you, medical or otherwise?
I mean, frankly, it's hard to grow it, as part of it. It's not, I mean, people call it weed, but it doesn't grow like a weed. To create proper, consistent, quality medicine, which is what Comcan's talking about with specific dosages, right? This is not just growing marijuana and selling it like you might have been buying from your cousin in high school, right? This is absolutely consistently dosed cannabis. So somebody with MS or, you know, any, any of the debilitating conditions can medicate with the exact same dosage every time. This is a purely medical program. So certainly, people who want to participate in the recreational program or want to grow cannabis or marijuana, they might grow it at home. But, you know, and Colorado was really apples to oranges, but in some senses, it's the same. And they have home cultivation there, too. And just like here, that if it does pass, medical sales have gone up in total volume. So it's not, you know, it's hard to grow, it takes time to grow, it's not free to grow either. And, you know, it just, people will just go for medical purposes to get real, proper medicine to a dispensary that produces it properly with consistent quality dosages. You know, that high CBD strain that has no psychoactive ingredient is incredibly difficult to grow. It's low yield, it's expensive. And so it's not just putting something in the ground. You wind up with something that's the same quality and consistency that Comcan or really most of the licensed dispensaries or registered dispensaries can produce. So it's really about that consistent dosage and medication.
Okay.
Okay. Is an executed lease a requirement of your completion of the public health process?
Yes, so with the sighting profile, you need to show that you have a binding commitment on the property. So the Department of Public Health has looked at LOIs as binding. In our office, we make a practice of not doing any LOIs that aren't backed up by consideration. We bind them, essentially. And so, but yes, you need to have a binding commitment on the property in order to complete your sighting profile.
Is it not possible, however, let's say you get a binding commitment from your landlord at 2, is it 255, yes, Turnpike? While that 18 to 24-month process proceeds, another property or another location comes available, and even while you have a commitment at 255, you could shift to another location while, you know, the wheels of commerce turn?
Absolutely, Mr. Semino. So there's a change of location request, it's regulatory request, it's a $10,000 fee to the Department of Public Health. I've actually done it with another client. You show that the town has, you know, similar lack of opposition to your new location, and we would move. And I do believe that building out the cultivation facility will take more time than retrofitting the retail dispensing arm, and so, you know, will stagger the buildup. That being said, you know, if, Comcan has every interest in moving this forward. So letter, doing everything we can to work with the Department of Public Health on getting a provisional registration, entering into special permit and site plan review with the town, you know, there's, you know, there's some engineering, although it's smaller, it's not a giant, you know, cultivation facility on, you know, on multiple acres, but, you know, there's paying for engineering stamps, there's significant outlay, you know, to actually getting it done, so that would all get done by Comcan. If some other ideal location opened up that seemed to be better, although this one does have a lot of benefits, the significant parking spaces, the public access, you know, then Comcan would certainly entertain moving if that was the town's request. But they're going to keep moving this thing forward.
Yeah, I don't have any doubt about that, but I would encourage you, you know, you've made a lot of commitments tonight to hiring locally, to paying taxes even though you don't have to, et cetera. I'd add to that list a commitment to continue to evaluate alternate locations. And I'm not going to tell the ZBA how to do their job, but if that were to be one of the conditions of their approval, you know, I wouldn't, I would, that would make a lot of sense to me. You mentioned about inventory. You don't like to keep inventory overnight, you only want to deliver as much per day as you need, but I imagine that's a little tight, that's a little delicate. You're not suggesting there isn't anything stored overnight?
No, so I don't know if I overstated that. The point was that we're not trying to absolutely take everything we produce at the cultivation and processing facility and stockpile it at the retail facility so that we're making deliveries from there. It's really bringing over what we need every day or two, you know, there's no, there's no set formula yet that's regulatory required or whatnot, but it's, we want to make sure that there's no, you know, that the chief and the members of the community are, you know, content with our security measures, and that's just another one of them, you know, is keeping, you know, on hand, you know, really sort of minimally what we need. Yes.
What do you need, I assume in a home delivery scenario, you need the exact same ID, sort of matching as you would if they walked in. So you get to a house, you ring the bell, the person who takes that package out of your hand has got to be the patient with an ID?
Absolutely.
As opposed to another household member, or leave it behind on the porch, or, you know, "We tried to deliver, come see us later." I assume that the rigor of the protocol is identical.
Both forms of ID, and in fact, the Department of Public Health has it now, where you can't even use a tablet or a phone app to run their database, you actually have to walk with a laptop up to the doorway and check their data, check the database with a live internet connection on the laptop, you go over 4G or whatever, and you'd be able to get there live. So you check both forms of ID, it has to be that exact patient, absolutely no leaving it if nobody's there, none of that, you know, and then if...
Sorry.
No, of course, Mr. Shea.
Cash is then paid at that time?
Yes.
For the purchase?
Yes, yes.
And again, there's two dispensing agents on-site, even in that, even at that transaction.
And the two forms of identification as well.
Call for me for now.
Just a few questions, and what I'm trying to do, and I'm trying to balance some of the questions that we have received from the public and to questions that I think are particularly germane, but you talked about this being primarily a cash business. What are your plans relative to deposits at the end of the day and leaving cash in the building overnight or over the weekend? Do you have a protocol or a plan relative to ensuring that it does not all of a sudden become an attractive location to secure cash by those that perhaps would like to secure it in ways that they shouldn't?
Absolutely. So Century Bank is taking these deposits.
Yep.
So we'll do frequent cash sweeps from the registers, they'll go into the back of the house, and then, you know, as often as possible, and I would say we would do it every day, and if that needed to be a condition of the special permit, if it was appropriate under your zoning bylaw, we would be amenable to that, and we'd be taking that up to Century Bank and making the cash deposit. I mean, that's what they're there for.
Yeah, and I think, I think to that end, and also not to, you know, belabor the details of a security plan in a public forum and for public record for such potential nefarious A lot of things go into it, right? So staggered, you know, staggered times and different vehicles and who and what and where so that you don't fall into any particular pattern. And again, to the extent that the chief of police is interested in being involved in that, we defer a lot to, to his judgment, his department's judgment as to what they would like to see.
All right, what I'm going to do, unless there's any further questions from the board before I open it up, I'm just going to ask the chief to come up to the microphone. I'd like to ask him a few questions. I'm sure the public would be interested in understanding what actions the chief has taken since he was brought into this process early on. Chief, thank you for staying at work today and being here this evening. Maybe you could just tell the people that are here and those that might be watching what your actions have been and what you have done since being brought into the initial discussions.
Like I think was stated earlier, contacted about a month ago, we sat down, we had a preliminary meeting. We went over the plan that Comcan submitted. I went over, I had a chance to review beforehand the security protocols, very thorough, provided by the DPH. Consequently, just did as much research as I could, both on the internet and with the other local law enforcement, that I've had some experience, brief experience with this so far, including talking to some members of the Mass Chiefs of Police Association. Consequently, had a second meeting where we went over any security questions that I had. It was probably two pages long. And then since then, just preparing for any questions that might come forth tonight.
And based upon your review of the security protocols that are at least specified by the DPH, do you have any concerns relative to policing the area?
Not presently, and the few concerns I did have have been brought up tonight, and I found Comcan to be very open in working with us to mediate any of those concerns, you know, going forward. I also just think, listening tonight, if it does take 18 to 24 months, we're going to have the benefit of seeing what works for other places that are already in operation. I think we also have the benefit of doing extra research of what's happening in other states. I know there's some concerns, if you go on the internet, of incidents happening. Our goal is always to prevent the crime before it happens, so that will be our goal moving forward.
Chief, can you just explain a little bit what you did in terms of reaching out to other chiefs in neighboring communities and the discussions that you had with them?
Sure, I just reached out to the towns with the other dispensaries. They all got back to me and said that there's no current problems at all to report. However, I should stress that in its infancy, I think Salem opened in July, the other two opened in September, and Ayr might have just come online, I mean, like in the last couple of weeks. So very much in its infancy in this state.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the chief?
I assume, maybe you already know this, but if you wanted to, I know there's great restriction on who can actually walk into one of these places, but I assume if he wanted to walk into one, that would not be an issue.
Of course.
Not yours, one of the ones that are open.
If he wanted to go into one of the ones that were open?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a little bit of a procedure with the Department of Public Health regulations to make sure, I guess, that he actually is the chief, you know, but other than that, there'd be no restriction on him going in, as far as I know.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
One question I forgot to ask, the consequences of a dispensary violating the DPH guidelines? What are those consequences? In other words, you're found to have distributed, not distributed, you're found to have sold this product to someone that you shouldn't have sold it to. What are the consequences?
So there were two new crimes created with the ballot initiative in 2012. There's a six-month crime for a medical marijuana patient who engages in the program unlawfully, and it's actually a five-year felony, they added, for a dispensary that diverts medical marijuana for non-medical purposes. So besides the five-year felony that the agents would be subject to, this is a significant outlay of time, energy, effort for the next, you know, for the last seven, eight months and for the next couple of years before, year to two before we even get open. The Department of Public Health will yank your registration so incredibly quickly if you do anything like that, that all that money and all that time and all the people that have been involved in making this happen for the benefit of the patients will have just wasted their time. So in addition to the five-year felony, which is very real, and it was passed by the voters, there is also the fact that we would, that Comcan would sacrifice its registration. And so that's, you know, it's significant, and the Department of Public Health will, it's such a scrutinized program in the Commonwealth, and so, you know, might, you know, just look under a microscope that they will, there'll be no, they won't let that happen. Anybody who diverts for non-medical purposes would immediately lose their registration.
Any further board questions? All right, what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite anyone here to either make a comment or question with this caveat, and you can take this for what it's worth. We greatly appreciate everyone coming. Participatory government, participatory democracy only works with participation. There's really no need, once a point has been made, for 10 or 15 more people to make that same point. One of the things I pride this board on, and something we strive very hard to do, is our ability to listen. I think we're very good listeners. Again, I'm not going to prohibit anyone from making the same point, but just take that into account if you're going to make a comment, that we are listening to what is being said, and we assume if one person says it, then more likely than not, it is shared by other people. That said, please, you're invited to participate. Now, sir, just tell us who you are, where you live, and what your thoughts are.
Kevin Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road. I'm going to stay away from a lot of the things that'll be addressed by the special permit and the zoning board.
Appreciate that, sir.
I'm going to focus on the bylaws.
Appreciate that.
So I do have a request to the board of selectmen to reopen the town warrant, to allow an additional article. I have enough signatures now.
Why don't we hold that issue until after this discussion? Because I do see that as a separate, and just so people know, let me just interrupt you, in terms of, to frame that bylaw discussion, as most of you know, a bylaw came for the first time before town meeting in 2013?
October 2013.
2013. And at that time, the bylaw was written, and Mr. Semino, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and it provided for a 1,000-foot buffer, for lack of a better term. During that special town meeting, it became apparent to everybody present that there was opposition to that amount of a buffer. Subsequently to that, subsequent, the bylaw was revised, and at the next town meeting, I believe in April of 2014, the current bylaw was presented to town meeting with the 500-foot buffer zone, and at that point, it received two-thirds support at town meeting. So that's where the bylaw, the genesis of the bylaw and how we got to the current version that I believe you wanted to speak about.
I appreciate that, and that was the bylaw based on the information at hand at the time, and also maybe being threatened by the ability to put it in any location, so you did the best you could to present that bylaw. I have signatures to look at changing that.
Yes, sir.
I also have a petition that over 400 people have signed to not agree with this particular location. So I can present that, too. And then lastly, I had a question on the current bylaw.
Yes, sir.
It says 500 feet for our linear feed from a school or a recreational facility.
Yes, sir.
Recreational facility says a running track or a running trail. We have two sponsored town events that run right down Clifford Road, two road races. We have a cross-country team that runs by there out of the nearest school for their races and their training. Are we violating the current bylaw by allowing this site? Thank you.
Okay, are you looking for an answer to that question?
I'm looking for what would be the board's opinion on that right now, because I think we're, I don't think that's, that fits within the bylaws, 255.
Well, the ultimate decider of that is the zoning enforcement officer, and I don't know how he feels about that, but you're suggesting that running a race once a year or twice a year is, qualifies as a recreational facility?
Four elements to it. Two road races, cross-country, trains there, and they run their events there. So it's technically four, and again, it doesn't talk to the amount. It just says, the bylaw says, that it can't be a recreational facility, which would include a running track, and a track is a place where someone runs, that's an athlete. So if you use those wordings, that's not a legal site.
I'm going to leave, the zoning enforcement officer is the zoning cop, and he has to make that decision.
Let me just say, I think it's a valid point, it's perhaps more appropriately addressed in front of the ZBA, but I do think it's an issue that needs to be flushed out.
Again, so back to the bylaws.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a response?
I don't know if there's any further responses there.
The zoning enforcement officer tells me that he enforces private property, he does not enforce a public way. So he would construe that to not be a violation.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Louise Clow, I live at 18 Main Street here in Southborough. I have a couple of comments and then a question. I did testify, actually, in 2013 about what was then the proposed zoning, but be that as it may, it passed more liberally in 2014. In terms of the medical benefit for this, I am a healthcare professional as well as a regulatory expert. The number of, the percent of physicians in Massachusetts who are supporting this by having registered to be registered certifications is 0.4% as of today. So you can see, it's not pluppin'ly popular among the medical profession. Just a comment. A question was raised about the impact of the possible legalization of recreational marijuana in Massachusetts next fall. To that end, I know that there's legislation already been written so that the state will be in some good position to regulate it. And I was, you know, personally disappointed to see that in that legislation, the existing registered marijuana dispensaries would be the first people to be approved to be recreational marijuana dispensaries. I can, I understand that from the perspective that it's already built, they know what they're doing, whatever, but this could mean that this is a huge benefit for a registered marijuana dispensary by now becoming a recreational marijuana dispensary. I don't know, I was disappointed when the then Attorney General said that towns could not refuse to have medical marijuana dispensaries, but could zone them and whatever else. I don't know if recreational marijuana passes, whether our town will be able to say, no, we don't want that. And if we already have a registered dispensary, it may be more difficult to do that. What I would really like to do is request that the selectmen not provide a letter of support or of non-opposition. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know if we even can do that. We've been asked to do that. Comcan can't, I don't think, can get any further with DPH if we don't write that letter, but if we have an option not to write that letter, I would ask that we not write it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Safdar Medina, I live in Southborough.
Sorry, again, a little slower.
I'm sorry, my name is Safdar Medina, I'm a resident of Southborough, and I'm here to just talk about our youth for a second, 'cause these, whether or not we meet the actual-
Just street address?
Oh, 19 Southwood Drive?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You know, whether or not we meet the exact number of feet is almost irrelevant, given the proximity to Neri and Trotiere schools. We know that about 16% of our youth have already tried marijuana. That's a stat that's available from the National Institute of Drug Abuse. And, speaking as a physician myself, I do know that it is unbelievably easy for people to obtain medical marijuana cards, they do not have to ask their primary care physician, they need a piece of paper with a diagnosis, and it's not restricted to multiple sclerosis or cancer, unfortunately, and we do know that a lot of that marijuana can get diverted once the person actually purchases that marijuana from a dispensary. And so that is my fear, that our vulnerable youth are going to be very close to a medical marijuana dispensary.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Erin Wheatley, 22 Clifford.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I'll just voice a concern. I don't know how old that map is, but there is also another development that's been built above Clifford that I don't know is represented in that map.
Well, wait a minute, before we go on that, can you comment, you just need to, you need your-
Yeah, it's out of the-
Yeah, I mean, he, you know, cut it, but this is a very residential area. And I am concerned, sitting here, listening to the level of security that is required to house what seems like a very safe drug, medical marijuana. Why, if it's so safe and not, no risk, why do we have to have so much security? Why do we have to have GPS, a security guard on site? Why is it a cash transaction? I mean, that's scary to me, that we're gonna house a business that's a cash transaction because it's illegal in the federal eyes, the federal government's eyes. And, you know, we, I remember voting at the town meeting, and I don't even think we knew what we were voting for at that point. I knew we were trying to put some bylaws in place. You know, if, for example, what if the school expanded and now it was within 500? Or what if someone on Clifford Road opens up a daycare center? I mean, that falls under the bylaws. What happens to the business? You know, I mean, the bylaw is, it can't be within 500 feet of a daycare center, a group, you know, you could have an after-school center, any of these things, it's so residentially located that it could be in violation of a bylaw by one person just opening up a center. So what would happen if that, if that were to happen?
Well, if you're asking me-
I am asking.
I can tell you, I am not a zoning expert, I assume, and again, assuming is sometimes a dangerous thing, but if the ZBA approved the permit and the business had that permit to operate, then any subsequent opening of a daycare or residential type of activity that the business would be grandfathered based upon their permit that was granted prior to the implementation or the establishment of that business. Same thing, I believe, and again, with regards to your petition to reopen the warrant and revise the bylaw, is that if this particular applicant is approved by the ZBA and the bylaw is changed, then this, as far as I understand, then this application would be grandfathered and not be subject to the new bylaw.
Right. I mean, I'm just-
Again, that's-
I'm just throwing out that, for all the board members, you know, we, we live in this town, again, we, I've been here 15 years. Do I wanna live? You know, my house is across the street, where we're gonna have to have the level of security that they just discussed. That's the thing that affects me the most. Medical marijuana, I mean, let's be real, anybody can access marijuana anytime they want. I'm in the, I'm in the medical field as well. Anybody can get a medical marijuana card. I lived in California. You can get brownies, Cheerios, everything. This is not, this is not something new, you're not reinventing the wheel. Why do we have to have armed, I don't even know if the guards are armed, but we have to have security, you have to pull into a garage, you have to lock the door, you have to have security cameras, you have to have G- why? What's happening? Why, why is this happening? And when I'm sitting here hearing that, and I'm like, I'm right across the street from this, I mean, how would you feel if that was your house? If you just bought that house, the house that butts that property was just purchased by a young family that just had a baby? How would you feel if you just moved into a town and then there's this some level of high-security medical marijuana thing? To me, I'm just gonna say my personal opinion, I feel like, from what I've read, that you guys are trying to get a letter of support so that you can put your package forward. And I just don't understand, I don't think Southborough is a hub, I don't think we're in a great location. Anybody who has to come to us because of where we're located is gonna, there's no public transportation to get there. There's already one in Framingham, the population's so much, or supported in Framingham, the population's so much denser there. I just feel like we're just like the final, final letter that they need to get. And that's just how I feel about it, but most importantly, from a resident, the level of security that was discussed tonight, there's a reason that that's in place, and I just wanna say, would you wanna live by that? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Mr. McKay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dave McKay, 61 Presidential Drive. I'm also the Chair, as some folks know, of the Economic Development Committee, but I wanna emphasize, I'm speaking on my own behalf and with the blessing of my wife, but not necessarily the blessing of my committee. I wanna highlight a couple of things, some of which have sort of been mentioned in passing, but the first has not really been mentioned, and that is the level of discretion that this board has to address these issues. This is a, this is not just a box that they have to check to open this kind of a facility. You're in the position to pass judgment on whether or not this is the kind of facility, and this is the appropriate location for this kind of a facility for our town. The residents don't get to vote on whether this is the right location for this facility. Certainly, I don't think folks had this location and this facility in mind when the bylaw was passed with some significant haste at the time, because there was no controls. And folks certainly didn't have this facility and this location in mind when the referendum was passed. I recognize and I sympathize with the humanitarian concerns that have been raised with this kind of facility. I've sat next to that bed in the hospice center, so I know what this is about, but I care just as much about my kids. My five-year-old's gonna be going to the Trotiere School in about six months. I came to this town for a reason. I came to this town because of the kind of town it is, and the kind of schools that we have, and the kind of family environment that we foster in this town. This is not what I signed up for. I didn't sign up to have a medical marijuana facility 600 feet from where my kindergartner's gonna be going in September. We don't get to vote on this, and this is not just something that should be passed along to the ZBA or passed along to the Planning Board. The reason you folks are a part of this process is because you're an important voice for this community, an important check to make sure that the things we do in this community reflect the values of this community. If this was just a zoning matter, if this was just something that you had to get a special permit for, we wouldn't be here talking to you, and they wouldn't be here trying to get a letter of support from you for this. So I would implore you not to support this application and not to support the request that Comcast is making for a letter of support or a letter of non-opposition. I share the concern about the security, and frankly, two things scare me more than anything else about this proposal, one of which is the level of security that's involved. On the one hand, I suppose that's supposed to give us some level of comfort, that gives me absolutely no comfort. In fact, it undermines the comfort that I might otherwise have. If you have to have full-time security guards for this kind of operation, if you have to pull the trucks in inside of a locked garage, if you have to show a special ID card to get into this kind of a facility, and you have to do all these security requirements and have cameras up, that probably tells you you shouldn't be doing this 600 feet from a kindergarten. I mean, it just, it's just not what we signed up for, this is not the right location. And I would add that I'm not opposed, I wasn't opposed to the referendum, I'm not opposed to making sure and to providing an opportunity for people who really legitimately need this kind of medicine to have access to it. But that's not the question that's before this board. The question before this board is whether or not this is the right spot, and whether or not you folks are gonna support this particular facility at this particular location. And part of the reason we put you on this board, the reason we voted for you folks, is to exercise the judgment for us that we don't have an opportunity to exercise for ourselves. We don't get to make a vote on this. The other thing that gives me little comfort in this is the fact that the state is so highly regulating this process. I don't mean to be glib about it, but these are the same people who can't figure out the foster care process and make sure that children that are placed in foster care are placed in good, loving homes, and we're supposed to rely on those same people to inspect this kind of a facility and make sure that this kind of a facility runs in the way that it's supposed to be run. That just does, gives me zero comfort. The last thing, two other things that I wanna mention. One has to do with economic development, and one of the things that I care about and about this community is making sure that we project an image that supports the economic development of our town that we know is so important to create in the kind of community that we wanna have here in Southborough. Our committee is out there busting our chops with people who are volunteers, just like you are, trying to bring good companies to stay in Southborough and to locate in Southborough. You probably know that CAS is leaving Southborough, they're going to Marlboro, they're practically right across the street from this locate, from this proposed location. It is not gonna make it any easier to fill these kinds of vacancies with that kind of a facility that's right across the street. This just isn't the right location for it, and it undermines the kind of business retention and the kind of community that I think, that I thought when I came here, we were trying to develop in this town. Last thing I wanna mention is that I know Selectman Kalenda is not able to be here tonight, he's serving in the Army in Congo. I know he has some, I think it would be a shame for this board to take a vote on this particular issue without having the full board in front of you and without having an opportunity to hear from, particularly when we, the people, don't get to vote on this, to hear from some of our elected officials who do get a vote on it. So I would ask you to find that you're certainly taking evidence and having this hearing tonight, but I think the full board should be present for this kind of a vote and for an issue that affects our community so deeply. So thank you for your time, and I hope that you will not provide the requested letter of support or non-opposition.
Is it Mr. Houlihan? Before I let you speak again, I would like to hear from people who have not, I'm not gonna prohibit you from speaking again, but I'd like to at least give other people their turn before you get back for, just in the ballot's box. Ms. Muggeridge? Good evening.
Karen Muggeridge, 15 Parmenter Road. I am a member of advisory, but I'm speaking as an individual. That said, as a member of advisory, we did have before us the, all of the procedures on the zoning, so I was involved in that. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I decided to. I am an RN with 35 years of experience, I have postgraduate business experience, I'm business education on the graduate level. I'm a member of the Mass Public Health Association and the National Public Health Association. I have attended conferences on this topic. I have a hard time wrapping my head around some of the comments that I've heard and read about our community and this affecting our community, our community not being worthy or how it would represent us. And I guess I just want to, the way I look at this is, this should be judged on, not by the emotionalness of people's reaction, but does it meet the bylaws? Is there an essence of concern that the chief addressed crime or security? He's comfortable. Those things are taken care of, or have been addressed by the people whose area of expertise in the town we should look to. I support giving the letter of recommendation to this. People who need this, it's not our place to decide, we may have a difference of opinion as to whether or not only 4% or less than, you know, how many physicians prescribe this, but that's not the issue that's before this board. So that's not how this decision should be being made, that's not the responsibility going forward. So I would, I'm not in your position, but that's, you know, some of these comments are certainly valid, and concerns are valid, but not relevant exactly to what you have before you. That said, through the process, some of the things that were brought up, such as the monies paid for the community host agreement, that, I believe, in this town is not clearly defined. I don't know if that needs to be decided at this point, whether that's-
That's down the road.
Decided by the ZBA or this board, those things are not clearly defined. But, again, some of the concerns that have been brought up here are certainly valid and emotional, but are they really relevant to this decision? I don't believe they are, and I would urge this board to go forward in a positive manner.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Esselbankian?
Good evening, Desiree Asselbankian, 137 Woodland Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanna thank Mr. Rosenfeld and his attorneys for putting together what I view as a member of the citizenry, a very comprehensive and thorough presentation. I think I read 100, over 100 pages since it was published by the Selectmen on Friday. So I thank you for that. I also thank the Board of Selectmen for presenting a forum tonight that I think was very well done, very well vetted. The questions, I think, led us, as you alluded to, Mr. Rooney, into a good direction for the presentation, so I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
As all five, or the four of you tonight and perhaps members of the audience know, I am a huge proponent for sticking to the rules. I'm also a huge proponent for democratic action and democratic process. And so what I heard at the fall of 2013 town meeting was not just about a buffer zone of 1,000 feet, but it was also about location. The original proposal that Mr. Semino, when he was a member of the Planning Board, brought forward to us, basically put the medical marijuana zone off of Route 9 on Crystal Prong Road. It was very clear to me, as a member of that town meeting, that the folks at that point in time that were present thought that that was not, that was too restrictive. Also, that being off of Route 9 in a very industrial area that's dimly lit, not very well-populated, that that wasn't necessarily safe for- very well populated, that that wasn't necessarily safe for any patients that would be visiting a future facility. Hence, the 2014 town meeting where the zone was expanded to include several areas of Route 9, giving a 500-foot buffer, it passed by two-thirds. And I was there, and there were a lot of maps. There were maps everywhere. I perfectly well knew, when I voted in favor of this zone, where the Route 9 areas would consist of. I think that the members of the public and the members of town meeting did a very good job, and their due diligence as citizens of this town, to regulate this appropriately. It took two tries. Most things don't take two tries. Most things get passed right away. So there was a level of discussion that took place at the most democratic process that we have in Southborough, which is annual town meeting. And I think it would be a real shame for the Selectmen to not follow that democratic process. So I would urge you at this ti, and again, I'm not going to bring up, you know, the medical components of it, the compassionate care, that's for another day. Quite frankly, I hope that you offer the Rosenfels and this local family, just a couple of towns away, a letter of support. I think that this would be a good thing for the businesses in this town, and I think it's the right thing to do considering that two-thirds, which is a lot these days, has Congress ever passed anything by two-thirds? Not in a while. I think when you have two-thirds of town meeting, not just two-thirds at the, at the state level, passing something, it means that that's what the citizenry wants. So I thank you again for your time in the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Nina Kasitski, 40 Flag Road.
Last name again, please, ma'am.
Kasitski.
Thank you.
I didn't plan to talk this evening, but the previous two speakers sort of compelled me to come here. I moved, we moved to Southborough a couple of years ago, and I want to talk about the emotional appeal of this town. One of the previous speakers said it's not a valid point, any emotions are not valid. However, Mr. Romano tried to make an emotional appeal talking about cancer survivors in the Rosenfeld family. Our family lost a family member to cancer, and we have two cancer survivor, two cancer survivors. However, I would never make that kind of emotional appeal a basis for their claims for a place, for medical marijuana facilities in this town. Why the emotional appeal is important is because we chose this town for its distinctly family-oriented culture. I have a PhD in education, and I work with underserved communities of children who live in drug-laden communities such as Salem, such as Brockton, and I work in Salem, so I happen to know those communities very well. Drug abuse is a tremendous issue that affects student performance in those areas. Northampton, I spent 10 years living in Northampton. Pot-smoking culture is prospering there. It's, it's very liberal students, it's a very different population. But those three areas where those facilities were opened, I believe by Comcan, they, they do have an audience. And I don't want to dismiss the medical benefit of marijuana, but I'm not a medical doctor. We do happen to have many friends in the family who are medical doctors, and I know that medical doctors are, who work in under, in areas with a lot of unemployed residents are sort of forced to provide prescriptions for marijuana when they're not needed. And I think Dr. Medina talked about diverting marijuana use unfortunate, it's very unfortunate, but that's a reality, that's what's happening. So you, you cannot be idealistic about the side effects of this business on our community. We cannot control those side effects. And I want to emphasize, when you talked about the financial value for the town of this kind of business, the qualitative loss will be immense to this community, because as we move to this town for its appeal to family-oriented people, after us, soon our friends bought a house here on Lover's Lane, and another family, friends of ours, considering buying a house here in Southborough, again, for its family-oriented culture. If you ask me, would, had we known about this kind of discussions or this kind of propositions, would we have chosen Southborough? I don't think so. We consider Holliston, the place where you live, as one of the family-oriented town cultures as well. But the emotional appeal of this town is important, and you cannot control side effects of such businesses. So I really hope that the Board of Selectmen, that who represent us, will vote against this proposition, as you will lose the population you want to attract, and you will gain population who you do not want to be part of this community. And that's guaranteed, unfortunately. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, Amy Wood, 9 Clifford Street. I too remember the town meeting where we passed the bylaw. I support the democratic process, as was mentioned before. However, at that time, I felt the process was very rushed. It was, we need something so we can have something. It's a disappointment that that bylaw hasn't been amended or reviewed since the 2014. Personally, I did vote for the bylaw at the time, and it was based on a specific question that was asked, and there were maps available, however, not everyone's eyesight or availability or due diligence was done ahead of time perhaps, but I do remember the, an answer to a specific question, which was, how close could any dispensary be to the Neri School? And it was, it's not going to be close. There were, you know, there was no real line drawn to them to say, this is the specific closest building it could be. I'm highly disappointed that I think the building selected is basically the closest building that it could be to, to the Neri School. I am making an appeal in support of our children and the safety of our children. I support the warrant article that would amend the current bylaw, and certainly hope that we could do that in a way that would reflect the, the comments that are made tonight. The security questions and the, the responses to them also did give me grave concern that, sure, Comcan, you guys sound like you did a great job, you know what you're talking about as far as securing your facility, but those controls only last as far as your facility. We have two vacant buildings that someone could easily just walk off to, and I currently consider them as public safety concerns already because they are vacant buildings, and that those controls end right there, and then they have access to my child who walks to Neri School. That's, that's my emotional appeal. Beyond that, I've been trying to answer for myself, and thank you for speaking on behalf, as a, as a, as a community member, not necessarily on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, but I struggle to find what the economic benefit to the town of Southborough would be for the medical dispensary. In all due respect, I, I question that, based on the hours that this would be open, that it would support 10 to 15 full-time jobs for this specific location. It does not complement or support, we're not a medical community. I don't see any complimentary or support of any of the existing commerce in town. And I also, from a taxpayer perspective, I do think the town will have to invest, as the police chief spoke about. It's very early in the process, he's done some research, but we are not equipped as a town to handle having such a location in our town. I, I respect and, you know, the, the notion that gifts could be made to the town. I doubt that those would offset the additional taxpayer dollars that would be required for us to handle from either the Department of Public Health or Public Safety that would be required to adequately monitor and, and handle such a, such a location. I'll just wrap up with, I do ask that the Board of Selectmen reject the letter of support or non-opposition, and also allow the article, the warrant article to be submitted to be considered a town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Michelle Hart, I live at 60 Deerfoot Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, I'm actually curious why Southborough was a proposed location, because it just seems like an odd choice. And this was brought up, as far as there not being any public transportation, and Route 9 is a strange road. I mean, the way Southborough is set up, as many of you know, there's not many ways to cut through the town. So if somebody's coming to this dispensary, they can go down and turn around at Crystal Pond Road and head back the other direction. But the only other two options besides 495 are cutting through Deerfoot Road and Flag Road, and those both come out right where a school zone is. And that's my concern. You can, you have laws in place that say folks cannot use the marijuana on location, but there's nothing to stop them from doing that once they get in their car. So they could be driving. I know that, I am, I am actually for medical marijuana use. I don't have a problem with that at all. I just think the location is really a poor choice. We already have speed issues going by the schools, and Deerfoot and Flag Road are very narrow. And if you're going to be doing a money sweep significantly throughout the day, I don't, those are the only roads to get to the other side of town going northbound, unless you go down and do the turnaround at the light. So I'm concerned about additional traffic, not traffic as far as being too many vehicles, but the type of vehicle that is, you know, taking money to a facility to drop it off or, or coming in. And from what I understand, and I could use your assistance on this, if somebody is suspected of drunk driving and they're pulled over, they're required to take a breathalyzer test? Is that correct? No, is that voluntary?
It depends on what you also, and then what he found, go forward based on what he has.
Because from, my point is, from what I read, if somebody is suspected of using a chem, a chemical drug, and they're pulled over, it's voluntary to submit to a test, and they can't be cited if they choose not to do so. Is that correct?
No, there's a, called a DRE, that's trained in that. Additionally, our officers have just been trained in a further methods of drug detection. So no, it would be kind of the same process if they found...
Hey, Chief, they're gonna, they're asking you to go to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
I knew that's what you really wanted.
No, it would be the same process to see if the person was impaired. We have a trained DRE who's an expert in the field. If we have something, we'll call him out if need be. Additionally, the, the other officers have been trained in, it's called ARIDE, it's a further enhancement of drug detection in people that they pull over and suspect of impairment, but it'd be the same process. The only thing that's a burgeoning field as this comes across the country is, obviously, there isn't a breathalyzer test for marijuana. So that's, you know, something that's troubling to law enforcement, but it's a field that's being explored every day, you know, just by the way that this is coming in so quickly. But we have our offices up to date on the, the latest training, if you could call it that, but it is a concern for law enforcement and something that they're looking at going forward. We're aware of it.
Thank you for clarifying that. So those are my points. Primarily that to get across town, you, there's really only two roads that you can do so, and they both dump out right at the trotty or crosswalk.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi, Julie Connolly, 26 Oak Hill Road. I am also a member of Economic Development, but I am speaking on my own behalf, not necessarily my committee's behalf. I do want to echo some things that, that Dave said, though, about, you know, the Economic Development Committee, that's been around for about two and a half years now. We've worked really, really hard to cultivate a business community that really reflects the, the talent and the values of this town, and, and I agree that this, in some ways, undermines our efforts. But I have a couple other points as well. We, we learned tonight that there are four dispensaries that have opened just in the past about eight months or so, with about 20 more that might be, that are in the works, that'll be opening presumably in the next year or two. So the presenter spoke a lot about access, and that, and that access is a big piece of, of where they put these dispensaries. Well, one, you told us that there's going to be most likely a dispensary about eight, eight miles down the road, so access is probably not going to be an issue. And there are also going to be 20 dispensaries, you know, within the state within the next couple of years. So I don't necessarily think that Southborough needs to, needs to add to that to, to provide the access that, that might be required for, for people who actually need medical marijuana. Another point that I wanted to make that's related to that, as the chief said, we don't have a lot of information on, on these dispensaries and how they operate and how they are kept safe and how they are regulated, because they've only been around for a few months. The, the first one came in July. And so, so we don't, I don't think that Southborough needs to sign up to be the test case for this. I just don't think that that's, that's a necessary, that's a necessary thing for us to do. There's, there is evidence in, around Denver and Colorado that, that crime rates go up near dispensaries between the combination of having drugs on site and having cash on site, it really makes us a target. So I, I fully agree that the location right near the schools, just in right near residential neighborhoods, just does not make any sense. And, you know, it might be overstating the obvious, but we all know that drugs are a huge problem in our community. I know medical marijuana may have its use, but as many people have, have pointed out tonight, it's not always just that point, somebody gets a prescription and it goes to the person who needs it. Somehow, these drugs get dispensed among, among our community, and in a time right, like we're in right now, where we are in a real drug crisis, I don't think that adding to the volume of drugs that are in our local community is, is a plus for Southborough.
Thank you very much. Mr. Picardi, good evening.
My name is William Picardi. I happen to own the building. I thought I should introduce myself. I live on Deerfoot Road. I've been here for almost 30 years. I've been in the building for over 25 years. It's been a very good location for us. And all that time, we've never had any instances of any kind in the building, and we leave construction equipment outside, we'll be moving that inside, and we have no walk-by traffic at all. It's just accessed by Route 9. My only experience with marijuana has been a very close family friend died two years ago, and her only relief the last year was through the marijuana. And my wife is with her practically every day, so.
Thank you, sir.
I'm for it. Thank you.
Mr. Bowlen. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Bill Bowlen, 35 East Main Street. I, I don't speak to the merits one way or the other of the proposal. I would only urge the Board of Selectmen, if you are considering voting in favor of a letter of support or a letter of non-opposition, that you stipulate that any negotiations regarding financial aspects of a host agreement be conducted by the Board of Selectmen and not left up to the whims of the ZBA. It's been reported for Framingham, Concom has offered in the neighborhood of 3% of gross sales up to $500,000 a year. I think that's a significant amount of money, and if this comes to Southborough, I think that's something that should be determined by the Board of Selectmen, what that percentage is and what the use of those funds are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Muggeridge, before I let you speak again, I want to adhere to the same rule that I imposed upon Mr. Houlihan, who I believe is now no longer wanting to speak.
What I was going to say was covered.
Thank you, sir. So to the extent that Ms. Muggeridge gets the stage again, is that confirmation that no one else has anything further to say? Not seeing any hands, Ms. Muggeridge, you may close out the discussion, ma'am.
Very briefly, a lot of the comments...
No need to repeat what you said.
That were made tonight were anecdotal, and things that we don't know if they would happen. We don't know if other businesses would not come to town. Maybe businesses wouldn't have, wouldn't even know what this business across the street would be. Part of the bylaw is signage isn't part of it. Property values actually wasn't brought up verbally tonight, but was part of online comments. Kingston, Rhode Island has a dispensary, and property values near there actually went up, which you can't determine whether it was because of proximity to the dispensary, but you don't know whether or not it was not because of the dispensary. There was, people are concerned about drugs and proximity to the school. I just want to finish by saying there was an excellent presentation... to the school. I just want to finish by saying there was an excellent presentation about a week and a half ago at Algonquin. Very, very well attended. It was a multi-disciplinary presentation. Not many people from Southborough were there. So great concern in the town, but it, again, kind of baffles me that people are concerned or thinking that they're going to go from a dispensary with people having a prescription and somehow go down and get it to people at a, students at a school. And yet, they're not availing themselves of programs that are to treat and help students at the school. Anyway.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moore Walsh, 4 Hickory Road. I was at that meeting. So I am a person who availed myself. I can't get to a lot of meetings. I also work in professional. I got here late at 7:30. So, you know, not all meetings. I'd like to go to everything, but I can't. And a lot of my friends who were there, I sat with, and a whole row of us, you may not know, but we were there. And all I want to say is that I also was at the town meeting, and I do feel that there was a misrepresentation about where this was going to be. And I won't go into more logistics, but I do think that marijuana is, it is a gateway drug. Let's not, let's not pretend it's not. Let's not pretend that most of the people I know who do smoke pot, it's fun. A lot of them have medical marijuana. They have, they, they have it, okay? So let's not pretend that, you know, that, that this is not something that's really happening. All right? And I'm not worried about my children, somebody coming and selling my kids drugs. I'm more worried about the people in my neighborhood, where I walk, where my kids run, where my kids go to school, where I walk my dog. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about my, somebody, my kids going in and, you know, stealing marijuana. I'm not, I'm more concerned about the element coming who's going to be there. And maybe you don't live near the neighborhood or near where this is going to happen. And maybe you'd be a little bit different if, if that were the case.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Daniel Xu, 17 Old Chapel. I made late decision come to speak because I think it's necessary to just express not only me, actually neighbors from our Old Chapel as well. I work as in an education institution as an executive. I know most of, I think every school is like alcohol-free, drug-free, anything like that. If anyone have marijuana there in our campus, you'll be expelled. So unless you're medical subscribed or something like that. But give the name, give the marijuana the name to the channel, to some kind of a password, drug way. And as a small town, Southborough should not supply that kind of a, become that channel there. Because as a population, we only have 8,000 people here. I believe this supposed to be in a bigger town, traffic, serve more people, more customers there. We should not become the hub of this kind of, unless there's a data shows, okay, Southborough population have 20% or 10% usage, or some kind of data shows there, there is a nearby town, this is the best location. I didn't see that data there. They shows, or they says, this is the only place in Southborough, but I don't see this other location, other towns. Why choose us here? And I wasn't in the last year meeting, town meeting there. I've been here for six years now. I have daughter going to go to near school very, very soon. But I believe if this kind of issue bring to the town meeting last time, and people have opening vote, not just board, I would say this will not pass.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, I want to thank everyone for, obviously, you had nothing better to do on a Tuesday night than come to Town Hall. I genuinely, and this board genuinely appreciates your participation. And it's, it's, it's a, it's not an easy issue. I think in speaking to the applicant or, or the presenter, as I started my discussion, you need to think about this location. And to the extent you get a letter of non-opposition or support from us, you may think you've won the war, but you haven't. You've, you've won perhaps a battle. And the neighborhood in which you are going to be locating this facility, there's going to be multiple, multiple eyes on you. And it's something that you need to really consider, whether or not this is the best location at the end of the day. This is just one step of the process. You'll have to go through a very thorough hearing in front of the ZBA where all these issues relative to parking, et cetera, will be vetted out. But any further discussion from this board?
I have something to say. I met a week ago Wednesday with the applicant. And at that time, I said the neighbors are going to be very vocal. They will show up at a meeting. I want to thank Mr. Purple for putting it out on the town's website and all of the packet information so it'd be available to everyone. I said that Wednesday, I did not feel that this was an appropriate site. I also suggested another site, which, to be frank with you, my neighbors wouldn't like, but it's closer to Route 9 and it backs up to the transfer station. It does not have direct access to Route 9, but it does have frontage on Route 9. And that's on the eastbound lane. I have concerns. I think we all have some concerns, but it does fit within the zoning also. They have, town meeting did approve a zoning article. As far as the neighborhood's concerns, I do take, I'll take a step back. I think they're legitimate concerns. We heard from the police chief this evening. What has opened has been only open for a very short window of time, and they haven't been able to be evaluated in a longer period of time. So we should have some concern as a small community as to what we can provide as far as safety to our residents. So I do share your concerns. And I also am concerned about the property values to this budding piece of property and its future use, whether it's this use or some other use. We do have citizens that have invested large sums of money into their property, and they should be concerned. And I don't know how we balance that. And that alone bothers me. Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Semino, motion?
I have one, I have one clarification. And I'll direct it to the comments about the bylaw itself being passed either in haste, or I heard the word misrepresentation. I reject that in the strongest terms. Comment was made and it's correct. We tried twice. We took two shots at this. There were maps all over the hall that night. Nothing was misrepresented that night. Two shots over a period of almost eight months. No haste in the passage of this bylaw. We do represent all of you, and we also represent the two-thirds of the people who voted to pass that bylaw that night. That being said, Mr. McKay, is he still here? I understand this is not just about zoning, okay? We, we have a letter from Mr. Robideau indicating that this is within the zoning overlay. So that really isn't even in question. So we do understand there's much more to this than that. I'm going to come back to Attorney Valerio and Mr. Rosenfeld to my point about pledging to us tonight to continue to evaluate alternative sites through the balance of this process. I asked you about an hour ago, I, I don't know whether it was artfully or not, but I don't think I got an answer. I'd like to get one, a commitment from you tonight, that if you get a non-opposition or support, that you will continue to evaluate and seek alternatives. I'm not aware of the one you're speaking about. I, I know what you're talking about, where you're talking about. I'm not sure why, what's good or bad about that site. But 24 months is a long time. And Mr. Rooney's correct. You know, the difference between 600 feet and 1,000 feet, I'm not sure what that is in practice, but it's enormous in perception, if nothing else. I will be at every ZBA meeting once this, if and when this goes forward. And that will be my main concern, in addition to all the other things that I know the ZBA will ably address. I think if there was, if the severe security measures that the DPH requires and that you heard about tonight, if none of those existed, we'd hear a lot of the opposite tack. I can't believe there isn't security around this use. I think, I think the security is designed to give you comfort. Yes, it may be overkill. Much rather have overkill on security than, than the opposite. I do believe the use will, there is no signage. The use will be invisible. Cars will come and go. It will be different. The town with this will be different than the town without it. But I'm not convinced at this point that it will be so different that we shouldn't support this. The permit is for two years. Two years from the issuance of the ZBA decision if the ZBA approves this, and that's a big if. From what I heard tonight, a large chunk of that two years will be eaten up by more process. So we, we may be at a point where this facility, if it, if it does open, isn't open for very long before they are up for renewal, as it were. And I keep that in mind as well. But I'm back to the, the alternative sites. Yes, sir.
Yes, so I will go on record, Mr. Semino, and with all due respect to my landlord who is present in the audience, that we will absolutely continue to monitor other properties as they come online. And yes, things may change as, as we talked about over this extended period before we are operational. You have my commitment.
Thank you.
You can have my attorney's commitment as well if you like.
He's the client.
Absolutely. As the compliance officer as well for, for Comcast, we will, we will continue regularly to monitor the available real estate that falls within the zoning bylaw, inventory it, and make an assessment as to whether there's a more suitable location and, and work with the board and the town on, if we come up with anything, vetting that immediately and seeing if we can move to that.
Yeah, that's a question that if you don't get it officially, you'll get it from me unofficially as, at every meeting as we go forward. What have we done? What have we seen? What's new?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of law, if I might. In terms of that commitment, which the state doesn't really care if you give us that commitment. They have a very generic letter of either support or non-opposition. So that issue stays with Southborough, and of course would be part of a commitment before you get into the zoning regulation. Would you be willing to report back on a date certain, even if it's quarterly or at some point, so that it's clear what other avenues you're attempting to address in terms of alternative properties? Instead of leaving it, we'll commit to look at other properties. That's, that's not very well defined respectfully, whereas where you could report back to the, at some point, to the Board of Selectmen. Because this is not part of this non-opposition letter. This is a, a commitment by the nonprofit and the compliance officer and counsel, which is important and which will follow through to the zoning aspect of the regulation. But maybe it should be on a time certain so that we know, well, the board, I should say, would know how, how they're doing on alternatives.
Hmm?
So, yeah. Yeah, yes, sir. So to, to address that, and I know Valerio probably wants to address it, but absolutely. I think that's a, it's reasonable as opposed to leaving it. Trust me, I'll keep looking for other sites. I would leave it to your recommendation as to who drafts such a document, but yes, absolutely.
Can I, I need to ask, you, you mentioned this is the only site you were able to, that was able to meet your needs and for which you had a landlord willing to rent. Did you have other sites that were otherwise suitable but for a landlord unwilling to rent? Just yes or no at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would pledge to work with you on that and see whether the landlord or landlords in question could be persuaded. Because I do believe that between the security and the, the, the lack of signage and the relatively, I think, light traffic in and out of the site compared to other businesses, I'm not sure this is a bad play for the right landlord.
I appreciate that, and I'm happy to share with you-
Yeah, let's talk about that offline.
-every point of contact that I've, that I've had.
All right.
Mr. Shea?
Just one point that I would make, and I guess it touches upon this alternative sites as well. As we passed the zoning bylaw establishing where this would be a lot, would be a permitted use in this town, obviously it failed at the first town meeting where it was brought up. And through that, that vetting process and all the meetings that were held, having the business district along Route 9 came through that process. And it was, and it was desired by the town, it was passed by over two-thirds. So while the residents here in the room are predominantly opposed to the location on Clifford Road, and personally, I don't think it's the best location as well, there are also a number of other residential streets in town that have properties that are within 500 feet of Route 9, John Matthews Road, Middle Road, Parkerville Road, Oak, Oak Hill Road, there's any number of residents that could also be impacted as well. So it's, so we could be in a situation where it's not the Clifford Road people, but it's also other residents as well. We need to keep that in mind.
Sure.
All residents, you know, all their tax money is, is green as the next. We need to treat them all the same. Again, I think the root cause really of why we're here, in my opinion, is that ballot initiative in 2012, which passed by a large majority statewide and townwide. And as one who is in the 37% and 39%-
Me too. That's ironic.
With all due respect to your, to your company, it's, and if the vote were held again today, I'd vote the same way. I'd vote up in opposition to the legalization of it if it's on the ballot this November as well. You know, that said, it did pass overwhelmingly through the state. We have the zoning in place. I can't vote to support this. My vote would be, at best, non-opposition. I'll offer that opinion to the board.
Want to make a motion, Mr. Semino?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board issue a letter-
Planning board?
I'm sorry. Freudian. I move that the Board of Selectmen issue a letter of non-opposition to Comcast to operate a registered marijuana dispensary in the town of Southborough. I will not specify the address in that motion. I don't need to.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Any further discussion?
I will say that I, touching upon the comments that I had made earlier, and my questioning, and the point that Mr. Boland made, I do believe that it is this board that ought to negotiate any financial terms and whether that should be wrapped up into this motion or handled in some other way. I don't, I don't know if it can or can't be included in the letter, but I think that's-
Yeah, I don't think it would be included in the letter. I think it would certainly be a notice that we would send to the ZBA relative to any sort of negotiation or mitigation that would be done with this board, full transparency and public hearings, and we would do it that way. I don't think it needs to be wrapped into this motion here.
Follow-up question. Do we have any indication when Mr. Calanda may be here to vote on this so that we're all present?
Well, as you know, we, we schedule our meetings months in advance in order to try to accommodate everyone's schedule. But let me just back up. To answer your question, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know when he will be here to vote on it.
Is this time sensitive to you? I know you'd like to have it, but do you have a deadline?
It, it is. So there's been a motion. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Thank you very much for...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
We'll take a quick recess until we get to our next agenda items.
Thank you for seeing that, I, I, you know, the building commissioner said, "I don't regulate the streets, I regulate property now." I thought all of them did.
All right, we're back in session on our agenda. David McKay, EDC update and discussion of Statutory Industrial Development Commission. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, folks, and thanks for having us. Of course, Pam Di Giovanni is with me today, or this evening. And we wanted to give you just kind of a brief update on the Economic Development Committee. I know we've, we've given you the annual report that Pam put together, so I don't want to belabor that point, but...
Before we do, I just wanted, and I'd be remiss if I did not congratulate you on the recent event that you held at the Double, is it Doubletree?
Yes.
The Doubletree, the Borough Summit. In terms of the attendance, the guest speaker, the lieutenant governor, your presentation, and all of the presentations, it, it really shows, David, how far we have come in such a short period of time with this economic development idea that really essentially blossomed or bloomed or was planted two years ago, if that. And I just wanted to congratulate you for that effort, and, and the respect that you have gained among your colleagues was, was palpable at that meeting. So congratulations.
Oh, well, thank you. It's really thanks to the committee and thanks to Pam, who has really helped us to jumpstart this effort, particularly over the last six months. How long have you been with us, Pam?
Six months.
Six months. That has really been kind of the, I don't want to say kick in the pants, but I'll say kick in the pants, that helps us to kind of keep these things rolling on a day-to-day basis, when the rest of us are doing our day jobs on the committee. So I appreciate that, and I, I think you're right, that Southborough has gone from being a community at the, really, kind of behind the times almost.
Running after the bus.
Running after the bus on economic development issues, to the point where Pam is now getting calls, and, and folks on our committee are getting calls from other towns who are looking to do the kinds of things that we're doing. So I think it, it does speak to the work that Pam's been doing, and the work that the committee has done over the last year and a half, two years.
One other question, and I apologize. You know, we, we decided to make this a part-time position at last town meeting. Is your recommendation going to be, and again, I don't want to put you on the spot, to maintain the part-time nature, or is there any expectation of perhaps increasing the hours?
That's not a discussion that we've had.
Okay.
I have to admit that from the committee level, there's been, it, we, we've had a bit of a ramp-up period.
Right.
To, not only for us to get to know Pam, and Pam to get to know us, but also just sort of working with the business community and the other economic development organizations in, in the region, of kind of getting up to speed and figuring out, economic development means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. And so you have to be very careful about the things that you focus on and make, and trying to prioritize your workload as best you can. My perception is that that is a challenge for us. I can already see Pam getting pulled in a lot of different directions, and, and we have to work to try and make sure that, against her will, she's not being pulled into things that aren't necessarily at the top of our priority list. So I wouldn't foreclose the opportunity or the suggestion that, that Pam's position perhaps should be a full-time position. I think we could certainly use her efforts if we had her for that amount of time. But at the moment, the, the, the sort of priority of the committee has been us working together and just sort of getting used to and developing a work plan for the amount of time we do have.
Fair enough. Fair question.
No, that's okay. So Pam and I want to go over, just kind of quickly, a brief report on what the Economic Development Committee's been working on, and where we have been, because I, I, I don't, I don't think it's quite appropriate to have the Industrial Development Commission conversation without you folks having a sense as to where we are and what we've been doing. So the good news is that Southborough's economy is quite strong. You have seen in our report, and I presented the other day, on Southborough, the plus region, which we defined as the four boroughs, Marlborough, Northborough, Southborough, Westborough, Hopkinton, and Hudson, leading the state and, and leading our area on most economic indicators, and Southborough is even at the front of that group. So we're very fortunate. Having said that, we've got real challenges here. But we've had a lot of success. Over the last three years, I believe, we've, the, the, the tax revenue derived from the commercial and industrial properties has increased over $400,000. So that's, that's exactly the type of impact that we're hoping to have as a committee. I gotta take credit for all that, but we think that, that this is a worthwhile endeavor, and we think that we're seeing, beginning to see tangible results. Pam will comment a little bit more about some of the direct projects that she's been involved in in just the short time that she's been here. But I think overall, having Pam and the committee doing the work that it's doing is having the desired effect, and it's, it's having the kinds of outcomes, even in a very short period of time, that, that we have, we had hoped it would have. So at that point, before we get to the IDC stuff, I would turn it over to Pam to kind of comment on some of her work over the last six months, and particularly where, where the value is in that.
So, thank you. I just want to say, it's been a joy to work with the town of Southborough, especially in the economic development capacity. And to Dave's point, economic development can be quantified in many different terms. So I'd like to say that my first task when I joined on the team was to develop that framework, you know, what are the objectives, what are the goals, develop a work plan with clear qualitative and quantitative objectives and measurable outcomes that we could deliver as far as successes. So over the past six months, we've worked very closely with businesses across the community. Specifically, we've worked with and met with twenty-eight businesses on an outreach level to, to ask them, you know, what are your expansion or relocation desires, and to also connect them with brokers and whatnot, and act as a liaison between the community brokers and the businesses. Specifically, we've worked with one company to fill and keep here, Ted's Towing. That was an operation of sixteen hundred square feet with a total private investment of over $2 million in retaining thirty jobs for the community. We've also worked with two other projects, specifically for two-hundred-and-fifty Turnpike Road on a preliminary planning basis. We did CAS, the company CAS, relocated to Marlborough, so that is one of our largest spaces that we do have for leasing availability here. So we are working specifically handholding in the project with their attorney to make sure that that site is filled properly. We've also had many other successes, such as we developed an entrepreneur greenhouse program that we brought to the library. We've met with over thirty entrepreneurs, and specifically, one of those entrepreneurs has recently leased a property in the Corderville Road. Section Expressions Art Bar, they took over a lease of, I think it's eighteen hundred square feet, and they recently secured a liquor license for the town. So that's just an example of how this entrepreneur program at the library that we developed in partnership can grow to other, further capacities. And I'm currently working with a company called K. Drones, and they're looking for square feet for their business. And again, it's, it's another company coming out of this entrepreneurial group. And to David's point, we have made many successes with partnering with the Boroughs Plus Group. It was a group that we initiated on our own and then developed the topic and concept for the summit that we just recently held in January. We had over a hundred attendees. The lieutenant governor was the keynote speaker, in addition to many other, you know, scholars and experts that we had had on that panel. I won't, I, I could go on for, for more, if you would like further detail.
No, it just shows you the effort that you've, one question about CAS. I remember a number of years ago, meeting with Mr. Minahan, who was a tremendous partner with the town, he was the CEO of CAS. Was it a space issue, they needed more space and we just couldn't accommodate them?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what it was?
More space? Because they were required, right?
Yeah. More space and, and the orientation and the, and the type of space, so, yeah, that, that's one of those where you hate to lose a good company like that. But I don't feel that it was for any lack of trying on the town's part generally.
Satisfaction on their part?
Yeah, no, I don't think it was a reflection on that at all. My impression, and I've never heard anything to the contrary, was that it was really entirely facility-driven.
Yeah.
And it just, they could not find a practical way to make that facility continue to work for them in the way that they needed it to. Having said that, you know, that's a sort of flagship location for us that, you know, is, is at the top of our list, and one of the, one of the properties that we want to see get filled as quickly as we can.
So David, how does that work? Now, it obviously goes with the leasing broker, and they just start to, what, receive potential prospective tenants? And when do we, we collectively, we get involved?
So we can get involved anywhere along the process, from feeding potential tenants to the extent we become aware of them, to the landlord, to the brokers, working proactively with the brokers to try and identify suitable companies that might be looking for a location and, and, you know, would that site potentially work for them? So we've been, we, you know, there's a number of different touchpoints where we can have some influence on that process. But I think as a practical matter for us, it's keeping in touch with the commercial brokers who are working to place clients, you know, all over the region, and making sure that they know that, one, that the facility is available, two, that it's a good facility, and three, and this is one of the most important things, that the town is gonna expedite the permitting of that to the extent that they need permits for it. Nothing is more frustrating to the potential tenant and to the landlord of finding a site, getting a deal done, and then finding out that it's gonna take sixty days to get an inspection that they need, because they're changing the configuration internally in the offices or something like that. So I think Southborough has been quite good at that. You know, in, in recent past, I've not heard those kinds of complaints, but I have heard them in other towns, and I've heard them in other towns that are very active in economic development. So you gotta be on the ball through the entire process. And I'm confident that we'll find, we'll find a, a good tenant for that location, but it's kind of a unique location, the physical layout of the spaces is a little bit unique, so it's, you know, it's gonna take a little bit of work, I think, to fill it.
When, when an individual comes into the town hall, you know, looking for space, has a space needs?
Yes.
Are the department heads referring them down to you, or to you, to gather information if they go to the assessors office or the planning board, planning department? Are they making you known to the community and to the potential tenants in town?
That's my hope, but not to my knowledge. I think it's been more me introducing myself to the specific departments and trying to forge ahead with those relationships. I think it would be very beneficial if there was a referral down to economic development as an introduction. But it, it's been an educational process to introduce the new committee and department to the different departments within Town Hall.
Do we identify the boards and committees on each of the floor levels outside, on the first floor, do we say the Economic Development Committee is treasurer, collector, town managers?
Are they on the sign?
Do we have a sign on the floor stating where you are located?
On the sign? I don't know, I don't know if Pam's on there, but I do know the rest is on there.
No, I'm not on there yet.
Oh, well, let's put Pam on there.
And I, and I think, and I, and that's obviously something that needs to be corrected, but I think that one of the things, just to point out, and Pam and I've had this discussion along with Mrs. Hale, is... with Mrs. Hale, is obviously, you know, Pam has still got, you know, the new car smell, you know, with the position and everything, and it's really been trying to integrate her into, you know, the processes that already exist, as you state. And when somebody comes and asks you, you know, how are you doing this, or why are you doing this and everything and that, you know, the first question is, why do you want to know? And you get that pushback, and it's just, and it's not, you know, mean, there's nothing mean spirited about it, it's just that natural, you know, and so, you know, we've been trying to find ways to better integrate, you know, Pam into the existing processes and make people understand that she is here to help, she is here to enhance, she is here to promote, and I think that we have, you know, taken some good steps down that road, not to say that we shouldn't continue to monitor and we shouldn't continue to move in that direction, and Pam's, you know, attitude and her, you know, she's got great customer service, so it just makes it that much easier for people to be accepting of that, of expanding those relationships.
Let me clarify my question. It wasn't meant to be a criticism, it was meant to be informational for me. How do we refer people?
But no, and I appreciate that, I just felt that, you know, I should offer at least that clarification, that that is something that, you know, that we've been cognizant of, how to take this new position and integrate it into some of the existing things that are being done.
I'd be remiss, too, if I didn't mention the next project that Pam and I and others on the committee are working on. The summit, as you might imagine, took a large effort and a lot of coordination, which takes a lot of time, with the other boroughs plus communities. Now that we have kind of gotten past that, the next thing that we're working on as a committee, among other things, is putting together a broker's breakfast and having those on a regular schedule, precisely for the reason that you've mentioned of making sure that the word gets out, that folks know that Pam is a resource, and it allows us to have that kind of direct connection with the brokers and have the brokers talking to one another about clients that they might have that might be good for potential locations in South Borough, and it will give us an opportunity to highlight particular locations that are on a kind of a priority list for us that we want to see filled. But having said all that, we're in a pretty great spot when it comes to commercial vacancies in South Borough. I think the last statistics that I saw were 13.5% for office, which is a tick higher than I'd like to see, but still better than just about anyplace else, and 3.6% on industrial properties. So industrial space is tough to come by, and, you know, we don't have a lot of vacancy in that regard.
That's great news.
So, I guess with that, we can kind of move on to the Industrial Development Commission and kind of what brought us to that.
Oh, I just wanted, to your point just now, Mr. McKay, I don't know what's cause and what's effect, but I know that I feel much better, and I sleep much better at night, knowing you and you Pam, and we haven't met, shame on me, are, you know, tending the flock on this stuff. I mean, I have no doubt that, like I said, I don't know what's cause and what's effect, but I know there's a lot of cause, however you slice it. And you use the word joy, I don't know if you even realize, when you first started speaking, and I'm, you know, in my mind, I was like, my antenna went way up, and I said, all right, I don't hear that often around here. So thank you very much, and my apologies and my bad that we haven't met before tonight. Let's keep going.
Okay. So the, I think it was the last time that I was in front of this board was in budget season, and the question was asked, are you folks in the right format? Do you want to be organized as an ad hoc committee? Is that the best structure for you to be in? And I'll admit, I think this is still a continuing and evolving question, but one of the things that Mr. Purple alerted me to many months ago was the fact that we have an Industrial Development Commission on the books here in South Borough, and we just haven't appointed folks to it for, I think, since the 1990s. So we sort of had this organization, this body out there, that is distinct from the Economic Development Committee, and it naturally led to the question, do you think you're better off being an IDC or an EDC? And the feeling among the committee members is that the IDC would probably be a better structure for the committee for a couple of reasons, one of which is just, you know, being an ad hoc committee, you never know, not that I'm seriously concerned that we're going to get dissolved someday, but it lends greater credibility to your mission if your committee is a permanent one and not subject to being...
The selectmen.
Right. Well, and, I mean, it's intended, being an ad hoc committee is intended to be a temporary committee. So the idea of permanence, I think, had some attraction to folks on our committee, and there's some sense, and I'll admit this is an issue that I'd like to be better educated on, but that from an operational standpoint, it would make things easier to be in that format, particularly on issues like budgeting and things of that nature, and maybe the way we're set up right now, we can't, even if it's been appropriated through the town meeting budget process, if we want to enter into a contract with a vendor, we've got to come to you folks first, which is not to say that that's a problem or that you haven't supported us or that I worry about that, but I always sort of struggle with, I'm a busy person myself with a day job, how much are we helping you and how much are we just getting in the way? How much do you really want to hear from us? And on those kinds of things, if it's been approved in the budget to kind of have to come back to the selectmen, if you want to hear from us, great, we're happy to do that, but if you don't want to hear from us and you don't want to be bothered with us, this other format might help to facilitate doing those things a little bit more efficiently. So the sense among the committee was, this makes sense if we can do it, but we don't want to lose our name. We feel like, particularly with Pam on board and the efforts that we've made over the last two, two and a half years, that folks are finally starting to realize who the Economic Development Committee is and what we're trying to do for the businesses and the nonprofits in our town. And it took about a year and a half for folks to understand the difference between Economic Development Team and the Economic Development Committee, and I haven't heard the team reference in a while, so I think we're kind of past that. I don't want to have to spend a year and a half talking about what the IDC is and why that's different. So we did get an opinion from Town Council about that, it appears. I've heard two different reports. One, that we could simply operate as a, almost a de facto DBA, being an Industrial Development Commission, but having as our sort of trade name, for lack of a better term, the Economic Development Committee or the Economic Development Commission. I don't think the Industrial Development Commission really reflects the mission of what we're, of the kind of economy that we're trying to cultivate here in South Borough, but I do have that concern. The other option is to make it completely kosher, I guess for lack of a better word is, that we could get special legislation passed to allow us to operate as an IDC, but under the name of the Economic Development Committee. So the bottom line is, the sense of our committee on that point was, we're interested in pursuing the, becoming an Industrial Development Commission, but we want to do it under the EDC name, and so we're not asking you to take any official action at this point, or at least not to dissolve the Economic Development Committee and appoint us to the IDC until we get that name change issue squared away.
What was, you said you had an opinion of Town Council? He's gone, never mind. From?
Yes, Mr. Satriano gave us an opinion, which we can certainly share with you, and his sense was that I'd be interested in talking to him about this, but his, because other economic development organizations have not gone through the process that he was suggesting that we would need to do with special legislation. But having said that, special legislation sounds like a huge pain in the neck, but I think in practice, it's not all that bad, so.
The, a couple of things, the legislation or the statute, I mean, you know, it's a small i, small d, small c, you know, I'm not sure it's intended to be the only nomenclature you can operate under, and I wonder also, we have a finance, we have an advisory committee, I just gave away my point, we have an advisory committee in South Borough, which is called a finance committee or a finance board, you know, in a lot of other towns, I don't know what the enabling statute says about that, and whether we picked finance committee or advisory committee just because we could, and therefore, similar to what you're talking about, we call it anything we want, is the question. But intuitively, I would hope we could.
Yeah, I think whatever name that you and your committee thinks is best, will best serve the town, we should call it that, and we should get to that point, however we need to get there. If there's a way to avoid special legislation, that would be great. If there's not, and you think it would benefit the committee, then you say we don't need to make a decision tonight, I say the decision, once it's made by your board, can come before us, and I think we will follow your lead in that regard. At least I will follow your lead in that regard.
Freddie's got a handle.
Yes, ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie, 78, Southville Road. I just had a question on the special legislation, and, you know, just as a citizen, hearing this for the first time, that you need special legislation, I mean, you can't just go to town, it might sound silly, but you can't just go to town meeting and, you know, put a warrant article on and form an Economic Development Commission? I mean, does it need something more than that? Because, you know, to support the EDC doing the work you want to do, sounds, if I'm correct, that it would be, you would be better able to do so as a commission. Just seems, you know, you just had said that there was very little industrial land in town, so to try to become the Industrial Development Commission, but then change it to the Economic Development Commission, just why not just become the Economic Development Commission?
Well, I think that's a good question, and I think the question comes into play on the mechanics of transferring the name, you know, how do we change the name?
I wasn't talking about changing the name, I was talking about why, is there a reason you can't go to town meeting with a warrant article and form an Economic Development Commission?
I don't think there's any reason that you couldn't do that, but you already have...
The point is, we already have this authorized in town.
Right. But it's an industrial development?
It's actually officially called a development, I'm sorry, it's called a Development and Industrial Commission, a DIC.
Well, I'm not sure what it's called, but it's got industrial, and we don't have, you just said, we don't have a lot of industrial.
Yeah, it's kind of antiquated.
And it just, why, I'm just curious, why, or suggesting, why not? Just to make it clean, and so that people understand, just create what the town needs, which is an Economic Development Commission, instead of being an industrial, any relationship to the, not that you can't do industrial, but it doesn't seem that's the focus of your work?
Yeah, I, the short answer to your question is, I don't think there's necessarily a prohibition of doing it in the manner in which you're suggesting, but at the same time, we'd be creating yet a third body, when we have the IDC already in the books that the town has already adopted, so it's really just a question of populating that commission with appointees that are appointed by the selectmen. Probably a couple of the things that I should mention is that, in terms of, the selectmen would still be the appointing authority. As a practical matter, I don't think any of the appointment issues change, I mean, the terms are different and things like that, but as a practical matter, you folks still get to decide who you think is worthy of being on this committee.
If you think that vehicle is more effective from a business operation perspective than if it's a way, if there's a way to do this DI...
C.
C, D?
DIC, Development and Industrial Commission.
There's a way to do that, and then doing a DBA as the Economic Development Commission, I would certainly be in favor of doing that, because then we can, then it removes the ad hoc nature of your committee, it conforms to the statute, but it doesn't get into this special legislation effort, which, I don't know what Town Council said, but I would hope, hopefully, we could avoid that.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, allow us to, we've been continuing, we've been exploring this through Town Council, but also with some of the other economic development organizations, and that's still a little bit in process in terms of, is this really what you need? So I would suggest that we come back to you when we have that piece of the picture kind of definitively figured out, and we'll know what the recommended course of action, whether that's asking you to support special legislation, and we've already been in contact with Representative Dykma's office on that, or if there's a more streamlined way to go about it, and we'll be happy to report back to you at that time, and then you can decide whether you think that's the right thing to do.
Perfect. Thank you.
May I follow up? Because I'm not sure I quite understand, special legislation is not just a matter of going to town meeting and asking to be, or is that the special legislation?
No, special legislation is the state legislature adopting the special act.
So to understand that the IDC has some authority beyond the town creating a commission, but it was geared towards industrial development, and that's just what's confusing here.
Just, let me clarify, let me try to clarify a little bit. So the town, and I'm going to get the date wrong, but I believe it was 1963, no, all right. Am I close? 55? All right, I was close. Accepted Mass General Law, which essentially has established an Industrial Development Commission, so it's not that we have something in our bylaws that says, here's what an Industrial Development Commission is, and here's exactly what they do, it's accepting a part of the Mass General Laws that says that we can set up an Industrial Development Commission, and the selectmen can appoint a specific number of people, you know, to this purpose, and it does speak to the issues that the EDC is currently handling. However, as Mr. McKay has stated, they're not quite sure whether or not they want to be called an IDC after they've branded themselves as an Economic Development Committee for a number of years. So the question is, you know, do you want to retain the, you know, the, I guess, the authority of a state statute, and something that's set up under that, or, you know, do you want to go and try and do, you know, a special piece of legislation that's going to take that and tweak it, essentially retaining the same amount of authority and the same type of structure, but just changing the name? So if Town Council has a comfort level with, as Mr. Semino, you know, the DBA piece, you know, then maybe that is the way to go, if it can be branded in such a way that's beneficial, without going through, you know, the machinations of having to change, you know, go through and try and do something which is exactly already on the books, the Mass General Laws, but just changing exactly what it's called, so.
So there's additional authority because it's a state legislated entity versus just going to town meeting? I guess the question is just, you know, for the public?
It's a state statute versus a local bylaw.
The industriallness of it, which, you know, maybe it's the same thing, but it's called industrial.
And in different communities, a different thing, so North Borough has, you know, it's an Industrial Development Commission. It works for them, you know, and it fits their profile, and they've probably had it longer, and they've got, you know, more longevity with it, and people understand what it is and what it does. To Dave's point, the EDC is still, you know, we're out of diapers and we're learning to walk, and we're doing a great job at that, but, you know, we've established a brand, and, you know, is, do we want to change that at this point, so?
And I guess, I just wanted to be clear, I'm not objecting to you becoming a commission in any way, I'm just a little confused about the industrial, the largest industrial parcel, I think, left in the town is under development right now, so, and I think you just said we only have, what, 6% is, something like that, is industrial, so trying to, just, maybe I'm wrong, but it sounds like trying to fit, you know, the round peg into a square hole. I know there's overlap, but...
I don't think so, let me mention two issues on that. The first is that the scope of the statute in terms of economic development is quite broad. It, under the statute, it's called industrial, but it's got a broad charge of what the commission would be focusing on. The second is, I don't know if this helps to put your mind at ease, but I wouldn't anticipate that our actual mission of this organization, whether we're called EDC, IDC, or something else entirely, would change at all. I mean, our focus would still be trying to, you know, because we became the IDC, I don't think you would see our committee advocating to put a, you know, a steel mill or a coal-fired power plant on Route 9. I mean, that's not, it's just the name that I think at that time, back in the 50s and the 60s, was the sort of buzzword for economic development.
We still have fence sitters in town, right? I mean, it's...
I was not...
Fence viewers. Fence viewers, I mean, you know, you know.
I wasn't trying to say that you were trying to create more... I wasn't trying to say that you were trying to create more industrial, although we maybe could use that.
In order to close, to close this loop, why don't we take up your suggestion?
Yeah, come back.
That you may come back.
Okay.
We'll finalize that, so that we don't just keep discussing it and not getting anywhere.
Fair enough.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy, Pam.
Mr. Ballantyne? Public comment?
Boy, do you have looks of anticipation. Good evening. My comments are primarily geared towards the audience at home.
The what, sir?
The audience at home.
Oh, okay.
And I'll be submitting a, a letter to the blog tonight, today, about a pretty unusual situation we have with the presidential primary election coming up on March the first. Sixty percent, roughly, just under sixty percent of the voters in the town of Southborough would consider themselves to be independent voters. The other forty percent is roughly Republicans and Democrats. There's the rub, there's no such thing as an independent voter. The technical term for that is an unenrolled voter, but somehow in the media decades ago, they used the term independent. So, I always thought of myself as an independent until I became the town clerk and I realized I'm unenrolled. So why does this matter? We have parties that traditionally people think of Democrat and Republicans, but there's also a whole slew of things called political designations. The Pizza Party, the Pirate Party, the whatever. You can form your own designation with like twenty signatures. I could have the guys with the striped shirt party, but it's not a party in the sense that you're going to get a ballot. Can you see where this is getting confusing? So here's what you have. There are now four parties that will have ballots available at the elections. The Democratic Party, the Republican Party, the Green Rainbow Party, and the United Independent Party. The United Independent Party is not the same as an unenrolled voter. If somebody has signed up to be a member of any of those four parties, when they show up at the polling place, they're going to be handed that ballot, even though there might be nobody on that ballot, no candidates on the ballot. And they're not going to be happy campers.
So the message is, to the extent that you want to vote in the primary, you need to declare whether or not you are a Republican or Democrat.
You need to check, you need to check to see what you've signed up for, because we've had a number of people come to the counter to register to vote or to submit absentee ballots, to be confused as to what is an unenrolled voter versus the term.
Right, you don't have to declare one way or the other. You just have to make sure you don't misuse the term independent.
That you've, that you, the choice that you've made, you're stuck with it. Yeah. If that's what you choose to be.
I assume your, your folks at the tables will be making clarifying questions.
They will, but the problem is, you have until February the tenth to decide to register to vote or to change your affiliation. If you have not made that change, and you show up, you're stuck with what you signed up for. So it's an interesting situation. I have a note I'm sending to the blog tonight that has a link to allow people to go to the state, Secretary of State's office online to verify how they are registered. They can come into our office if somebody would like to change their party affiliation.
What ballot does an unenrolled voter get?
Any one they want.
Okay.
An unenrolled, you have a choice of any of the four. And we expect to have a sample ballots in the next couple of days. And when that come forward, we're going to put that on the website, and that will give people enough time to look at that, and they might be enrolled in a party that they choose to be enrolled in. They may look at a party with nobody on the ballot, and they can make whatever decision they want to make. So it's kind of a head-scratcher, but it's worth it for people to take a look at this so that the vote, that, that they have the ability to vote in the way they choose to vote. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick thing before we get into this budget piece. I just wanted to, and it was touched on earlier this evening, I just want to acknowledge the, the opiate use and abuse forum that was put on at Algonquin on January twenty-fifth. And I appreciate District Attorney Joseph Early's office. He is heading up a central mass opioid task force and is putting, you know, and brought a, a lot of great people together on the panel. I want to, you know, specifically recognize Representative Carolyn Dykema, as well as Police Chief Paulus for representing Southborough on the committee, or on the panel that evening. And it was a very good, very good presentation. There's probably a couple hundred people there. There was also a number of resource tables set up prior to the meeting. Also, a town clerk was there as well, Mr. Hegarty, as well as Detective McCarthy from our department was there as well. And as I said, very, very important issue. I think it was touched on this evening. And one thing that I did pass out this evening was a copy of the Mass Municipal Association's report of their opioid addiction and overdose prevention task force, of which I am a member. And it is a very good document in terms of resources for communities, as well as families who may be dealing with these issues. And, and, you know, I just want to, I assume the board would have no objections, but I would like to have this placed up on the town's website as a resource. And, and that was, that was pretty much my, the extent of my comments on that. The, to jump to, and again, now we have a, an empty room, pretty much, but I thank the, thank those of you that have stayed, because this is the beaten potatoes.
Not completely empty.
No, 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 I know, I thank those of, those of you that have stayed.
It's quality over quantity.
Including, yeah, including Mr. Ballantyne, who's going to be doing the majority of the speaking. But wanted to bring to the board this evening, just an update as to where we are with the fiscal seventeen budget. This has been, again, you know, it, it's been a difficult year for a number of reasons that Mr. Ballantyne, you know, will go through. And, but I, but I, I think it's been a very good process. The process, as I say, is not finished, it's ongoing. But I want to have Brian just run through a couple of things and see if the board has any questions, and just kind of make sure that we're on the right track as to where we are. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Good evening. It's a joy to be here. That's the second time Mr. Semino's heard that. I just, that's for his benefit. So we have the budget update for fiscal seventeen. It's a total of seven slides, very short and painless tonight. It's going to give you an idea of where we are. It is February second. The town administrator and myself have met with, I believe, every department now. And we've listened to, you know, what was proposed and put forth. We've come to some conclusions with most of the departments. We've made adjustments in many departments. And with that, we'll run, we'll run right through it, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at for next year. We'll start with the revenues. The increase is one point one percent. That's fairly small, as you might imagine. The governor, the governor's budget does provide for a, a proposed increase for Southborough, a whopping forty thousand dollars between Chapter Seventy and the undesignated local aid. So not a whole lot there. The seventeen state charges, which as you recall, include things such as MBTA pollution, mosquito control, all those kind of odd little things. We don't know those yet. Charter school, that too. And miscellaneous things. We, we will not know those for a little bit, so we've made an assumption to level fund those for the moment. You may remember from the audit and from previous discussions, free cash took a hit this year because of the snow and ice deficit last year, and some of the department's residual funds were a little tighter than normally. So we started the year a little bit of a, with a challenge already. New growth always starts as an estimate, but I am told by the assessor that this is going to be a thin year. There are some larger, larger projects on the horizon. However, the timing of them is probably not going to be in seventeen. It's probably going to be eighteen or later. So we, just to give you an idea, we finished last year with about seven hundred thousand or a little more than that in new growth, and we're just estimating three hundred thousand this year. Again, it's going to be one of those years of, you know, fix the roofs, fix the porches, all that type of little stuff. Which leads into the next little bullet point, that the building permits are up. Quite a few, actually, and we've had a conversation with the building inspector. A little bit unusual, you can see they're up over two thousand permits, which is a lot. You'll see that in his budget in particular, that there are some staffing hours for him next year to alleviate some of the problems that that's created due to the volume. But the, it, it's, it's just interesting to look at, only because a lot of these permits are the non, you know, non-new build type permits, you know, wiring, electrical.
Seems like an extraordinarily large number.
It's a, it's a large number. It's a large number. But again, we did have a, a brief conversation with him the other day, and interesting. If you look at his larger permits, his, his new construction, they're, they're up a little, but very, very little. Most of that is, again, the smaller, smaller type permits. Yeah, that, well, that could be part of it, too. We just got the first excise ca- commitment, which you'll be getting all your bills in this room, most of you, this week for all your cars, so you should be getting them in the next couple of days. That is the biggest commitment and revenue source of our local receipts. It's about a couple million dollars. Happily, it was up, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is a lot for the first commitment, three hundred and seventy-six bills. Part of that might be Madison Place, there's other reasons, it looks like the leases are up. Some of the businesses registered their vehicles in town, so that's a good sign. That flows, I made a mention that this flows to the local revenue, so we put some of that, at least, not all of it, to be a little conservative, but we, we do incorporate some of that in the revenue stream for the estimated revenues for, you know, that we have available for seventeen. The last little bullet point is assessor's overlay. That's the amount he sets aside every year for abatements and value changes for personal property and real estate bills. He, in the past, he's returned, you know, various amounts. We've had those cases that he's talked about before, about the telecoms. And this year, he is turning over, I think it's about a hundred and seventy thousand, but that is down two hundred and thirty thousand from last year. So it's just another revenue source that.
Can you remind me, the revenue increase of one point one percent historically, or at least the last couple of years? Where were we at in terms of the revenue increase?
It's usually anywhere between two to four percent. Somewhere in that range. Depending on, it can be, it can be skewed a little bit, because in that is water and CPA and have odd things that sometimes flow through there. But that's, that's typically where it is, right around there. So if we go to the next slide, expenses, they're up one point eight percent. Obviously, one point eight percent versus one point one percent is not a good thing, but we've incorporated, we actually started the year, excuse me, I'll go back a, a step, with three percent raises for all non-union employees. That was since revised down to two percent. And we'll be making those changes as we go along in the departmental budgets. Three union contracts expire June thirtieth of twenty sixteen. The town administrator is actually beginning those contract negotiations now. New Communication Officers Union. And they, obviously, I made a note here, they are underway with the police. So we don't have a timeframe on those quite exactly yet. We hope to have, have those complete in time for town meeting. We'll see. Again, the budget proposals were reviewed by myself and the town administrator. Advisory started meeting last week. We did attend that meeting, went very well, the fire department and the assessors actually did some reviewing. So they have a tough schedule ahead. Tomorrow night, they got a heavy night with a few departments, so they are getting in the swing of it. They have a schedule set up, so the next month or two, they'll get there, sort of act in order also. The total operational budget, which is the departmental budget, the debt, the benefits, most of your, you know, departmental budgets, separate from warrant articles, are up three point seven eight percent. And the, the next little bullet point, I think everyone will agree, is a positive one in the scheme of things. K to eight is two point six one percent as an increase this year. The superintendent, you know, heeded our, our, our call to try to really be careful this year, because we knew it was going to be a tough year with a lot of challenges. And so we appreciate that. The Algonquin assessment is, at this point, unknown. We are planning for an estimated five percent increase. However, again, that's still, you know, the Southborough assessment, which is what we really want to know, is, you know, still not known at this point. The health insurance budget, another large area. We actually have a meeting with one of the carriers this Friday. If you remember from last year, we had some issues trying to batten that down and get that where we thought it was, you know, in a place where we could live with it. And we're still doing that this year. There's some challenges there. You know, the town administrator and myself are well aware of them, so we're going to be putting some pressure on the carriers to get their estimates down. One of the, the Fallon renewal is very good, it's about four percent, and that's great for health insurance. It's our other renewal for Tufts that, that seems to be a little bit higher than we, we can sustain it. So we'll work on that. Assabid assessment, still unknown. We do know there's a, their project has finished up, and part of that assessment is their, our share of that debt, which is about fifty thousand this year. That's, I think, one of our, should be one of our higher assessments for that. So as you know, the debt goes down with them, just like any other debt project. So as we move along, we'll, we'll see that go down.
The one other piece with, with the, with Assabid is that we do know that we're up five students.
Yes.
Over last year. So that is going to make it, so I, we do know that budget is going up.
Yes.
To the extent it's going up.
We just don't know the extent.
Means to be seen.
This is a funny budget year in a way, and I, I don't know if the town administrator's noticed it, but we've had a lot of ups and downs. We, we, we keep thinking we get these little victories, and then we get little setbacks. We keep thinking where, where, where we should be, and then we're not. And, and actually, I'll talk about that the next slide. The new initiatives this year are some new things in the budgets that the board should be aware of. There is one new police officer. The police department had asked for two originally. We do think there's a, a need, or at least a, a need to listen to his, you know, his thoughts on that. And we thought one officer was, was a good starting point for him to, to, to see where he can go with that. We do have funding for a full-time IT manager. I think we've talked about that before with the board. As you know, we have an outside vendor now. We'd like to transition that gradually to have a full-time IT manager in-house. The funding increase is not great. There is a slight increase, but it's not, it's not enormous, so that's good news also. Oops. Excuse me, we lost that. Lost it over there. Yeah, we lost it there. So we'll give it a second. But the, the next thing down, if you had seen it, was the transfer station stickers for the clerk's office. As you know, the, this isn't so much of a new initiative, it's a change of policy and, and, you know, the, of, of how we collect those. So they are going from, or transitioning from the DPW to the, the town clerk's office for the summer. So that led to some reorganization in both those departments. Obviously, the public works didn't have the need for some of the funding that was related to that, and consequently, the clerk needed some funding related to that. So I think he's been before you and explained that process, and hopefully that will be a benefit to the residents. The Youth and Family Commission, this may be something also, you, you would recall, they are looking for eight hours, approximately eight hours of administrative support for the new director and the new assistant director. They made a great case that the director herself was getting, you know, pretty much getting paid to do a lot of administrative support, which wasn't very efficient. So that's kind of an efficiency thing. The ZBA, this is where the, the permits, and we're trying to alleviate the volume issues with the increased permitting. So they are looking for fifteen hours a week approximately for the new year. Again, administrative staffing. And the administrative position, the BOS, which is Board of Selectmen, your department, is increased ten hours weekly. is increased 10 hours weekly. There will be some reorganization in that department also. There could be some, we haven't got anything official, but there could be some staffing changes. So that, we have to be aware of and plan for that for next year. Other items, continued funding is the next page. The $250,000 to the OPEB trust fund, other post-employment benefits. I hope you remember what that is. Sort of our obligation to paying other employee benefits once they retire. That is within the budget now, as we established last year, so that's, that is still there. We just want to point that out. Debt service is going down next year, and we've committed to not losing that debt service to basically the tax levy and funding other things with it, which we've done some of the past few years. So we, we've proposed putting that in stabilization. You know, again, with the public safety building on the horizon, makes sense to do that and start planning some of these financial things we can do to, you know, make that project as successful as we can. $508,000 is proposed for the capital department. That is the operational department we've put inside the budget. There are nine requests. You may have a sheet that shows what they are. If not, you'll get it tomorrow for certain. Five are funded via non-tax levy sources. There was a number of water, there was an assessing and a number of fire department requests that had funding sources that stood on their own. So they were able to be paid out of their, you know, other items. Capital articles totaled $304,000. That includes the majority of it, $250,000 for road maintenance and a couple of other articles for, you know, that are included this year on that. And the one budget article that we have annually, and we sometimes have other budget articles, but this year we only have the facilities maintenance fund for $100,000. As you know, this is, this fund goes back a ways now, and we try to keep it at $100,000. It appears the facility manager is going to be fairly exhausting that this year. So he'll be requesting that. One borrowing request, water main cleaning for $800,000. Again, that's funded via the water rates. So it's sort of a water department project. And last budget, last little continued funding item we want to bring forth is, this is year number two of the Northborough legal settlement for $220,000. Again, that's fully in the, inside the budget and accounted for.
Brian, what's the $525,000 underground fuel tank replacement?
Oh, that's down the DPW. That's, that's because the fuel tanks down there need to be dug up and replaced. We're finding that it's, the insurance, we're actually on, we're getting close to being unable to insure it. We were able to insure it a few years ago, and the last few years it became, it's starting to be expensive. Number one. Number two, we're worried that we're not going to be able to insure it at some point.
The tanks are at the end of their useful life.
They're at the, you're right, right.
And that's the issue with, with getting them insured. And we've been fighting with the insurance company every year to, well, they're not there yet. And now we're there. So we do need to be somewhat proactive. They're not leaking. There's no issues, but-
Correct. There's no contamination. There's no-
Be an insurability issue in all likelihood next year.
Is that one tank or multiple tanks?
I think it's two.
Multiple tanks.
Correct. Yes.
Ms. Gallagher, two tanks?
Two tanks. Underground source, two tanks.
What are the, what are the sizes?
Ah, see?
Okay, so two 12,000 gallon tanks?
Yeah, but we're going to go to above-
And they'll be above ground. Right, right. They'll be above ground after this. Okay, so next page, the tax impact, the fun stuff. We started at a 7.2% increase for the budget way back in early December. That's when, you know, both of our sets of eyes popped out when we saw that first number, when everyone put in their requests. And your $2.4 million of unused levy capacity had gone down to $400,000. Yeah, that was, that was troubling. But that's when we knew we had to do a lot of work on this, and we've, we've come a long ways. So we're down to 3.1%. Last year, as you might recall, after the tax rate was set a couple of months ago, it was 1.9% was the final numbers for fiscal '16. And the 3.1%, again, we're, we're going to try to get that down lower. That's where we are now, but we're going to do a little more work. We reduced $594,000 in the operating budgets and $600,000 in the capital articles. And the revenue's increased by about $300,000. So there's just some of the approximate numbers that changed along the way as the town administrator and myself were working through the budget. Takes into account all the warrant articles requiring funding and the, I did mention the debt service going down, but it's about 3.7% in total. The, the gross debt service total will be going down this year.
And in terms of the reduction of $600,000 in capital articles, is that based upon perhaps a perceived lack of need or just putting them off for another year?
We've tried to balance this out because I don't like putting things off and deferring them very often because they only come back and sometimes they're more expensive. That being said, we had to balance that this was going to be a challenging year, and we can't have a tax rate that's non-sustainable either. And that's, that won't get support. So most of these, I would say, are things that could have been easily, there wasn't, for instance, one of them was the windows on the town hall. Something like that, we felt, could be put off because there wasn't an immediate need. The discussion probably should take place, but whether it's this year or next year, it's not going to, it's not going to make a huge difference. We just made those type of decisions. There's very few in here. We defer just outright. There's maybe a few smaller ones, but, you know, again, this is the balancing act some years you have to make. But we are careful, to your point about, yeah, you don't want to defer too much and just end up seeing it again with more next year.
And that's really what it came down to, is, is, you know, like the, like the fuel tanks, you know, we have to do that. There is really no way around that. But some of these things that would be nice to do, if we could do them, you know, were the things that we're looking to, you know, defer to future years. But they are still in the capital plan. And, you know, we've tried to ensure that they're not going to, as Brian said, be in a position where it's going to, it's going to hurt our ability to fund them, you know, worse next year than it would have been this year.
And, and quite honestly, we, we are planning on, and I don't want to set this up for failure, but we are planning on '18 and '19, certainly '18 being better years. Obviously, that service has a couple of big years of very large decreases. Now, we know that the public safety building is going to occupy some of that, but, but there should be some opportunity there to, for capital to be, you know, supported. So-
Terms of increased revenues?
Correct. Correct.
In terms of increased debt capacity?
And that also. Well, that also. Local aid will be disclosed in May or June. As you know, that's, that's an annual ritual. New growth, local revenues and values will be settled in the fall. That's also an annual ritual. I'm kind of just reminding you. Possibly a lower tax rate impact will be, you know, will be less than hopefully that we estimated. I'm anticipating it should be. It should come down somewhat. I don't have an idea how much, but, but it should come down. The excess levy capacity rate now for what we have is approximately 2.2 million. It's still healthy. It's still a good amount, you know, from 2.4. For a town this size, it's, 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 you know, it gives us some flexibility and that's a positive. Moving forward, last quarter, last slide here. Advisory is continuing to hold their hearings, so that's great news the next couple of months. Got their schedule. Production of the budget book, which is all our detail that the town administrator and myself started last year, will be revised and hopefully out early next month with some new facts and figures and the departmental details. The budgets and capital articles will be distributed tomorrow, so you'll all get the detail. Weekend reading, if you want. Take a look at it. We're hoping, you know, you'll, you'll look at the departments and articles and, you know, should you have any questions, please forward them to either one of us and we'll, we'll try to help you out. Revisions still need to be completed, as I mentioned, with the benefits. Some salary adjustments and revised estimates for purchases. We're still, departments can still come in and say, well, I found something cheaper. I found something a little bit better that I need to revise some numbers with. So the numbers will change. They won't change drastically, but they will be refined as we move along. So that's where we stand.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to apologize because you covered this while I was briefly out of the room. And I'll, I'll just, I'll put this in the form of a blanket observation for you and Mark. With regard to the, to the capital, the operating budget, capital, capital articles? What?
No, the thing finally popped on. Yeah, that was, that's over. That's okay.
Can I go? I, I was just, if this, if this is me showing my ignorance, it wouldn't be the first time. I was stunned by some of these figures, okay? Just the, just the, the amounts for things, right? Street sweeper and tool cat, 300 grand. Jaws of Life, 25 grand. I mean, I know it's an incredibly important piece of equipment, but 25 grand? You know, assessing software, 50 grand. Rifle replacements, 15,000 to replace rifles. How many rifles do we have, right? Don't we mostly have pistols? I mean, and what happens to the old ones? Phone system, 35,000, right? Underground fuel tank replacement, half a million dollars, right? Fingerprint device, almost $20,000. I mean, is it magic fingerprints? I mean, what, what does it take to just put your hands on a, on a light, right? So, so I wonder, and I, again, could be totally ignorant and I'm just curious, but I do wonder how much scrutiny is put on these, these individual items. When you, obviously, when it's part of a, you know, almost $50 million overall number, any one of these doesn't do a thing. But in the aggregate, I'm just, I, I don't know. It just caught my eye. And there's no question. There's no, nothing to answer. But maybe something will change between now and next time we see these numbers. I don't know.
Well, to the extent it, it allays any of your concerns, I can tell you that from my past experience in going over these capital items, for instance, street sweeper and tool cat.
Yep.
In, in speaking with Ms. Gallagher, she's not getting the top of the line.
I understand.
She's cheaper and tool cat.
I understand.
She's getting the best value for her dollar there.
Right. I obviously don't know what a street sweeper goes for these days, right? So, so, but I mean, you know-
And they're a one-trick horse.
Jaws of Life is, you know, it's, it's a motor and two, two arms that's spread apart.
You don't want to get a used one.
No, I understand. I just don't know why, why the jaws of life people get away with this.
Well, that's a whole different discussion, I think.
I, I know. I just, I felt like it needed to be said. I felt like I wanted to say it. Probably didn't need to be said, but thank you.
So if I can make you feel better on one item?
Yeah.
The assessing software? And, and again, this doesn't have an impact on the tax levy because it's coming out of overlay. But we have worked with the Department of Revenue to make some changes as to the way that the implementation of new software is being done, which will probably save us $10,000 to $15,000 off of that. So, and as to the rifle piece, there is one in the trunk of each of the cruisers, and they are all outdated and cannot be certified for use.
Fair enough.
So that's-
Look, let's don't spin this into, I don't want, I don't want our guys to have what they need. Obviously, I do.
And you will, and you will see all of that detail in the warrant, in the budget book and everything.
He just stole what I was going to say. I was going to say, you're going to get a detailed, a little blurb about it. So if you have any questions after, just let us know.
I'm not suggesting we do not replace the rifle. I'm just-
No, no, I understood. I just figured I'd ask, I'd offer that clarification.
Yeah, fine. We'll do what it takes.
Okay. Well, that's my piece and hopefully you can-
And distributing the information to us tomorrow? Is that going to be electronically distributed, paper?
That'll be electronic to everyone, yes. It'll be, actually be a good point. It'll be going to advisory committee also at the same time.
One quick question. Brian, you mentioned you didn't know about the Assabet value, but you've got something in that budget or in that spreadsheet. Is that just an estimate?
Yes. Yes. They, we do have their debt piece, and I, I just put an estimate in for the, the enrollment piece.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Good work, as always.
Brian, thank you, Brian. Very succinct and surgical in your presentation. In terms of the consent agenda, Mr. Semino.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and consent agenda items one through six as printed on our agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We've already addressed item V.
Yeah, we're done.
We need to go into executive session. The board will be entering into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Law J, Section 21, and not returning to open session. The issue to be discussed is to consider the purchase of real property, exemption six, as the chair has determined that having the discussion in open session may be detrimental to the public body's negotiating position, requires a roll call vote. Runi aye.
Semino aye.
Shay aye.
We are in executive session. Good evening.